What I would like to do, Mark, is keep it as a cleanup. I'd like to put you last and then I would like to just ask, you know, more of the introductory or general type questions and then go one, two, three, and then to Mark if that's okay. There are, I've numbered these sample questions and you're not confined to them, but there's sixteen of them. I don't know if we'll get to all sixteen. But I figured what I would do, and because again, I think these are general and I'm, I'm, I'm subject to whatever suggestions or order or procedure you guys want to implement. I was gonna ask one, two, and three. And then if there was any time fourteen, only because I was just interested in the question. It's really not a general question, but it's an interesting question. Um, and then if we do follow this order, then I would be looking for Peter to pick at least three questions. And then I would be looking for Dorcas to pick at least three questions and so forth down the ladder. Is that, is that a manner in which people are comfortable proceeding? Or do you have any others, is there some other way you want to do it?
I think it worked out well when we did it that way for the police.
Yeah, we kind of did it, you know.
Let's call you three questions and then go to the next.
No, we're gonna go rotate one at a time, yeah. And because I, I think it keeps us more interested and I, I think it's better for the candidate too, to get to, get a feel of the board. Um, so I'd go, I would take number one, for example, then I would go with Peter's first question, then Dorcas' first question, your first question, Mark's first question, and then we would repeat that process. So the only reason I mentioned those numbers is if that's okay with everybody, when you're choosing questions, just omit one, two, three, and fourteen.
Pete, what do you want to do?
For me, four, five, and six all kind of go together very nicely, so I would take, take those.
Let me, let me, let me put Peter's name in there, Peter. 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 Okay, so now we're down to Dorcas.
Six, seven, eight, and nine.
Boy, that was tough. Okay, so Dorcas will do seven, eight, and nine.
Mark, do you have any preferences to which ones you want to ask?
No. Now you, um, if I'm the cleanup hitter, I'll, I'll just swing it, whatever pitches it.
Yeah, what do you want to do, Dan?
Ten's a big question, and you know, for us, it's real important. So I, you know, take a look at that one, too. Well, it's a lot of the internal.
These aren't numbered, so I'm having trouble just keeping them.
In addition to critical.
Well, ten would be
That?
The fourth question down on the second page.
That's number ten.
In addition to the critical public facing services.
Yeah, it's, you know, that internal collaboration with the departments and, you know, it's a key.
Want to give that to Mark?
Sure, I'll take that one. I'm gonna be listening to all the Q and A and O.
Okay, so we're looking for Dan right now.
I'll do eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Okay, Dan's got eleven.
Yeah, that gives Mark three.
Whoa. And thirteen, and, and, okay, and then Mark, you got ten.
And sixteen is an orphan right now.
I'll, I'll take the last two.
Okay, ten, fifteen, and sixteen?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, okay. Mark, and you can, you can wing it, Mark, if, if, if you've seen those have been answered, or it just kind of, uh, there's not much meat left on the bone on those questions, you can just.
Get some more meat.
Gets, put some more meat on it, yeah. All right, so we got that. All right, the other thing we did when we interviewed the chiefs is we said that if someone has a follow-up question to a particular person's question, we can shift immediately to that, um, selectmen to ask the follow-up question, so you want?
I would recommend that.
We do that, too.
Yeah, I would recommend we definitely do.
Right, um. For sake of the public, um, two of the three interviews will be live, one of them will be remote. Actually, the first interview, when we get to it momentarily, of Christopher Weiner is remote because he had another commitment and he's traveling.
Right.
Uh, was he from Missouri?
He's in Missouri, and he has a, he has a council meeting, a board meeting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock that he has to be at.
So he requested that it'd be done remotely, and we wanted, wanted to get the interviews going right away, too, because these candidates may be looking at other positions as well as this position, and we wanted to, um, get the process moving, so. Is everybody ready to go forward, or do we need any, any other organizational work?
No, I think we're good to go.
Okay.
Okay, if we could elevate Mr. Weiner, Weiner. Interesting, we've been calling him Chris Weiner, so maybe he can pronounce his name for us.
Good evening, can you hear us, Chris?
I can. Good evening, how are you?
Yeah. Um, how, how do you wish we addressed you, is Chris or Christopher or whatever?
Chris would be terrific.
Um, how do you pronounce your last name?
It is Weiner, you, you pronounced it correctly.
Weiner, not Weiner, okay. Um, welcome to the interview, we're sorry you couldn't be here personally, but, um, we'll do the best we can to make this a qualitative experience for you. Um, I'm Mike Stone, I'm the chairman of the board, um. I will be asking questions first, we'll rotate question by question. Second question will be lady to my right was Dorcas McGurran. And then to her right is Peter Q. Smith. And then we'll go to my left, selectman Dan Horgan, and then we go to selectman Mark Forrest. Um, and we will alternate those questions with the exception that if one of your answers to a question invites a follow-up question um, by another selectman, they can come in immediately and ask that follow-up question, even though it's not their turn. You understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have any questions?
I do not, I would just like to mention that I do appreciate the opportunity to participate in the interview. I appreciate your time and, and certainly the accommodation to participate remotely. Uh, I apologize, I wasn't able to make it out there, I would have loved to have made the trip, but I just, uh, with the council meeting in the morning, I couldn't make that work.
Okay. So, here's your first question. Please provide us with an overview of your education and experience relative to this position, and tell us what made you decide to apply for it. What technical skills and certifications do you possess that will be valuable in your role as the finance director?
All right, I, uh, graduated from the University of Kansas, uh, back in twenty-ten with a degree in public administration, my bachelor's in public administration with minors in economics and sociology. Uh, and I have since then had the opportunity to serve for four different cities. Uh, I started out with the city of Cherryvale, Kansas, as the city clerk and assistant city administrator. So really got to, uh, be involved with a lot of the financials and day-to-day processing of financials, utility bills, et cetera, uh, there in Cherryvale. And then from there, I spent two years there in Cherryvale and, and started my uh, certification program as a certified public manager, uh, while I was there in Cherryvale, and then progressed to the, uh, city of Gerard, Kansas, where I became the city administrator there. Uh, took on, uh, that organization and uh, ended up being that, it was a much larger organization, about double the staff that Cherryvale had, and still had a very large hand in the finances. I built the budget, uh, and that was something that I had learned there, there in Cherryvale. I didn't build the budget myself in Cherryvale, but I did help the city administrator do that. And so got a good feel for that process, uh, and coming over to Gerard, I was able to, uh, to do that, and I wanted to, to make sure that we were, my, my CPM program, my capstone project for that uh, was to build trust in local government, to rebuild that, because as the general public, uh, I think largely struggles to trust government at large anymore. And so I was trying to make sure that we found ways to engage the populace. Uh, started broadcasting our city council meetings on Facebook Live, uh, held community meetings to try and get the public's input, uh, as for what they wanted to see from their community. Uh, did that with the, the, um, the public, the governing body, and my department heads, uh, to try and get a good broad sense of what, what everybody wanted in the community, especially being a newcomer there. And then compiled all that information and provided that to the governing body and to the public, presented that and said, hey, this is, you know, what the, the common themes are, and so we identified six common threads that the governing body wanted to select as their priorities moving forward for the future. Uh, I thought that that worked very, very well to help me, uh, provide the populace a sense of, of trust and engagement in the community, and one of those things was transparency, and so I didn't feel as if our budgeting process, our financial process was, uh, all that transparent at the time. We spent a lot of, uh, money in catch-all line items or account numbers such as supplies or other operating expenses, where if we didn't know where to, uh, where to expense something, it would just get lumped into that category. And so I wanted to make sure that we didn't do that practice any longer, and so I rebuilt the chart of accounts, uh, creating a lot more accounts, uh, felt as if, hey, if, if we're gonna spend more than on a certain threshold, at the time it was two hundred and fifty dollars, um, on a recurring annual expense, that I wanted to have that allocated as a separate line item or a separate account number, just for, for tracking and, and trend purposes, uh, and transparency purposes. And so I think that went, went over very well, it was a, a challenging task. My city clerk, um, as well as my governing body at the time, were, uh, I think questioning my, uh, my sanity at the time, just because it was, it was so much work, but at the end of it, um, the city clerk and the governing body both really felt as if it was, uh, a very valuable process, and, and we were able to, um, articulate much more transparently, you know, what our, our city finances look like, and we were able to improve the city's financial position substantially over the course of that time period, uh, the two years that I was there in Gerard. Um, a- as well as I think that, um, just that approach towards things really helped in terms of accomplishing that trust in local government, bringing that back. Uh, you know, but when I got there, we would have, on average, one, maybe two people show up at city council meetings. Uh, and, you know, we wound up that, uh, there were seventy to, um, seventy-ish people or so that would typically watch on, on Facebook Live, watch our meetings, so, uh, they'd, they'd comment on Facebook, and so we'd respond when we got an opportunity to. Um, and I had city council members that'd be watching that feed, and so they would see those comments and address those occasionally, um, immediately, there in the council meeting. So I think that was very responsive and engaging for the community and worked out well. Uh, we're going over to Garnet, Kansas, after a couple of years there in Gerard. Um, it was another larger organization, a little bit larger population size, uh, that community was about thirty-four hundred people, um, and, uh, grew again with number of employees. And did the same thing there in terms of rebuilding the chart of accounts, uh, because I wanted to accomplish the same thing that I was able to accomplish in Gerard, uh, felt as if we were able to make things a lot more transparent. We were able to make sure that from a financial perspective, we were, uh, spending money on the right things in the right areas, and we were able to track those things. We were able to ascertain when there were expenses that were a little bit out of line, that, hey, this doesn't make any sense. What, why did this jump fifty percent, uh, compared to the past three years? Uh, we were able to figure out, oh, okay, well, uh, AT&amp;T just jacked up our, um, our telephone bill for seemingly no reason. Well, it was because our contract expired, um, and so, you know, but making sure that, you know, we were able to stay on top of those things and, and be able to then call, you know, call that company and say, hey, don't, don't be jacking this rate up on us like this, just because, you know, this, this contract expired without any kind of notification that, hey, your bill's gonna jump by, uh, from ninety bucks a month to twelve hundred dollars a month. Uh, you know, some of those things are just ridiculous and they'll gouge you, and so, you know, we, we really wanted to make sure that we were being proactive and trying to have more information to make informed decisions. Uh, as well there in Garnet, was able to, uh, substantially improve the financial position of the organization, improve our, our cash reserves, uh, and improve the, the cash, uh, in, in of cash balances, as well as paying off some substantial debt while I was there. Uh, managed some, some large projects, uh, got some substantial grants, but was in the, when I left, uh, the organization was in the middle of, I was hoping to see it through, but didn't end up making that, uh, making that happen, but an eighteen million dollar wastewater improvement plant, uh, project, uh, wastewater treatment plant project, and so I know you have a much larger, uh, wastewater treatment plant project that, that you have, uh, in the works right now, and so, uh, you know, that, that's something that would be a really exciting thing for me to be able to come into, would be just, uh, you know, being able to get down and, and really focus on some of those things, but um, I appreciated that opportunity in Garnet, and here moving over to, to Monette here for the past two years in, in Missouri. Uh, it's been kind of relearning things here in Missouri, uh, the transition from Kansas to Missouri, there's a lot of things of the same. You know, municipal, municipal finance in a lot of ways is, is similar, but on the same hand, there are things that are different. Um, and in Kansas, I dealt with, uh, cash basis fund accounting, um, which I really liked. And coming over here to, uh, to Monette, Missouri, I'm dealing with, uh, GAAP accounting, generally accepted accounting principles, and so uh, that's been a transition, you know, uh, depreciation and, um, and handling just the finances in, in a different format. Uh, but I, I really enjoy that as well, uh, that, you know, the GAAP procedures are exactly what I learned in college, and so, you know, calling back on, on some of those skills, uh, but the, uh, the process largely is, is very similar, and so it's just something that you have to make sure you, you stay up with, you know, how, how we process things, the procedures are important, uh, making sure we have checks and balances in place, and and just, uh, really making sure that we try and make sure we're, we're very, uh, upfront with what we're trying to do and engage the populace, engage our, our customers, whether they're, uh, the general public, whether they're the governing body, or whether they are department heads, and making sure we have good relationships with everybody to, uh, to make sure that we're able to process the needs of the organization, because all that, i- it runs through the, the finances of the organization to make things happen.
Do you have any follow-up on that, anyone? No? Okay, Dorcas.
Hi, Chris, nice to meet you.
Good evening, nice to meet you.
Do you have experience in working with municipal bond rating agencies to manage the bond rating process? The town presently has a standard and poor's bond rating of double A plus, and we are very anxious to reach triple A status. How would you approach fulfilling the goal of raising the town's bond rating?
Excellent question, and unfortunately, I, I don't have the, the perfect answer for that. I, I don't have experience in that realm, I would love to say that I did, uh, but I unfortunately do not. Um, that is something I've always wanted to do, is to be able to, uh, engage with, um, the bond rating agencies and help improve our bond rating, uh, for the cities I've worked for, but from a staffing perspective, uh, as you may have picked up on, you know, we didn't have a lot of staff to be able to handle the administration of the organization, and so I was always the finance director in addition to um, the, the city administrator or the city manager, respectively. Um, and so I, I have not done that, uh, the first step that I would honestly take would just be to, uh, make sure that I uh, reach out to the bond rating agencies, I reach out to other cities, um, other finance directors who have gone through the process. Uh, I, I am aware of other organizations that have gone through the process and, um, and it's been very successful, and so just to to learn, you know, not, not to reinvent the wheel, but to learn, hey, what, what was successful? How did you, uh, achieve your goals? And so what do we need to be looking at, and how, how do we present our case the best to make sure that we, uh, reach that bond rating that we're, that we're really trying to move towards? So I think that would be the, the key for me, is just trying to, to learn from others who have had success there, um, and, and try and make sure that we're able to implement that success, uh, ourselves.
Okay. Any follow-up? Questions from any of the board?
Chris, my name is, my name is Peter Smith, and, uh, I'd say welcome to the Cape, but, uh, welcome to being online. Question I have is, um, and you've already mentioned this already, it says, uh, but do you have experience in infrastructure financing and coordinating the financing of a major capital project? Um, and then, as you know, the town is in the process of a two-point-seven million phase one of an eight-phase wastewater plan, with the financing plan fully developed for phase one only. How would you approach the oversight of major expenditures in phase one while providing leadership on financial planning for the next phases?
So, uh, definitely a multi-part question here, if I, if I leave out anything, please, uh, please follow up with me on that, but as far as my experience, I definitely do, as I articulated, uh, wastewater improvement plant project. Um, have a, uh, wastewater improvement plant project here as well. Um, currently in, in the finishing stages of an airport expansion project, um, here in Monette, a thirty million dollar airport expansion. Um, a hundred percent funded from the FAA. But obviously still, you know, we still pay the money and we reimburse, or we get reimbursed by the FAA. Um, there's still a lot of oversight involved, and so there's a lot of manage, managing the project. Uh, work with inspecting engineers, certainly, you know, people, uh, that's, their skill set is more defined to, you know, making sure that these things are, are do, going the exactly way they need to, you know, I'm not a concrete expert to know that this concrete, uh, is, is exactly the thickness it needs to be, et cetera, so we hire people for that, but from a financing perspective, uh, definitely are very involved. Um, and so just ma- making sure that we go through those processes, and, and I would do the same thing, uh, with regard to Yarmus wastewater improvement plant project, um, that we, you know, that phase one, just really get down and understand the project, you know, what are our goals in the project? Uh, what's the timeframe here, what are the critical paths? Uh, making sure that, you know, we don't wind up holding anything up from a financial, uh, perspective. Uh, we get the vendors, the contractors paid. Uh, and, and really make sure that everything is going off without a hitch, uh, that the inspections are going well. And if there are issues, that we, we do have to sometimes hold people's feet to the fire and say, look, you know, we're not paying you, and, and until, you know, this step gets, uh, gets accomplished. We've had to do that at times as well on various projects, but, um, but certainly the goal I, I would say would be on, on the next phases, two through eight, would just be to, from a planning perspective, really devote the time and the energy to making sure that, hey, these, these critical pathways, uh, that we know are gonna be an issue, that uh, we get them accomplished in the earlier phases, uh, try and make sure that we're able to continue to provide the services that we need to provide, that they're not, um, interrupted, um, that we don't take things out of, uh, we, we don't move things around in the phases that are gonna negatively impact our populace, um, as well as that from a financing perspective, that we're gonna be able to, to make this work. Uh, you know, that we're gonna be able to, to raise that kind of fun, those kind of funds within the timeframe that we need for that phase. Uh, if, if there, if there are, uh, challenges when it comes to, well, we're gonna have to pay off some other debt before we can, can raise new debt, you know, what that looks like, and from a timing perspective, you know, when can we get those things accomplished? So, uh, certainly the, you know, my effort would be just really getting in and, and understanding the situation, and then trying to make sure that I work with, um, you as the board selectman and the, and the city administration staff, um, to make sure that we're able to, to plan appropriately for what those next phases are gonna look like. And from a, from a financial perspective, how much money we're gonna need, and then trying to make sure we go out and we secure those dollars. Um, you know, right now, the, the, the interest rate market is not great, and so, you know, issuing municipal bonds, um, you know, certainly we get some advantages there, but, uh, it's still gonna be challenging, trying to make sure that we're able to, uh, to fund these things well into the future, and, and then what, what's our plan gonna be in terms of refinancing, once those, once those rates come down? Uh, just trying to make sure we're, we're considering everything, um, and, and, you know, planning for the long haul on, on what we're gonna do, uh, to make sure we can best set ourselves up for success and our community up for success moving forward.
Chris, the wastewater project that you were working on in, in your neck of the woods, how, roughly how big was that, and how, how long was the process?
So, currently here in Garnet, or sorry, in, in Monette, um, we're in the midst of uh, about a twelve million dollar wastewater treatment plant project. Um, we've been working on it for about two years, um, I'm hoping to, we've, we've already done some of the work. Um, a minor amount, we spent about a million dollars, uh, but then here this fall, we're gonna really kick off with a substantial amount of the work. Well, obviously a lot smaller in scope than what you're looking at there, um, but, and I did have an eighteen million dollar water treatment plant, um, project in Garnet as well, that, uh, was, that was a, a much longer-term project that the, uh, that one was in the works for about six years, um, was, it started even before I got there. Uh, from an engineering perspective, there was bouncing back and forth on, on what we needed, what we, um, what the engineers felt like we needed, what the governing body felt we needed. Uh, the cost kept going up, the governing body decided they wanted to change engineers in the middle. Um, and so that kind of threw a wrench in the process, and, but the cost just kept, uh, exploding. And not, not all of that was the engineer's fault by any means, supply chain issues and COVID, et cetera, everything, um, just was a perfect storm to, um, unfortunately, impact things in a very negative manner from a cost perspective, but, uh, but we did have, uh, some challenges there that we were able to work through, and, uh, but the current wastewater plant, uh, that I'm working on is, is, uh, been in the works for about two years, right, right about the time that I started, um, and it's, uh, it's gonna be about twelve million.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, next question will be selectman, uh, Dan Horgan.
Hey, Chris, my name's Dan Horgan, I want to thank you for putting yourself forward, uh, for this position here in town. This question's a little bit lengthy, so, um, just break it out as nee- as you need to. How would you rate your familiarity with technology and financial systems, including Munis, if you've used it? And if you can, share with us a time that you've used technology to improve performance in financial transactions or tracking and or analysis. And then are you capable of managing a comprehensive general ledger and financial suite of software to gain the maximum value for our town?
All right, thank you for the question, um. So I would say, and again, like the last, uh, couple of questions, if, if I leave out any part, please do follow up with me on that, and I'll try and make sure that I, uh, and I touch on that, but from an experience standpoint, I would say that, um, I don't have any experience with Munis, uh, in particular, but I do have a variety of experience with various municipal softwares. Um, every city that I've worked for has had a different, uh, municipal software system for the general ledger, and so, you know, I've adapted very well. Um, I started out with, uh, Thomson Reuters or, um, Manitron, Infinitex, uh, in Cherryvale, and then uh, moved over to Data Technologies, um, Summit was their, uh, was their product. And then in Garnet, changed to ENCODE, um, which was, uh, done by Tyler Technologies. And then here in Monette, I have Casell, uh, so I've, I've had a variety of different, uh, financial platforms that we've had to use from a techn- technological perspective. Um, and I've worked with all of them, all of them have their pro, uh, strengths and weaknesses. But it's something that I, I've definitely been very adaptable to. Um, when it comes to, you know, leveraging the, the software to, for analytical purposes and improvements and processes, I would say that I've definitely done that, um, in, in terms of what I referenced previously with the rebuilding of the chart of accounts. Um, I had to learn intricately the, the financial software to be able to learn how to do that, you know, how the account numbers are numbered, um, and what the process looks like, how, uh, I did a lot of the coding myself, you know, the journal entries and, and how things are uh, are correlated, if I, if I make a, uh, a transaction here in order for the financial system to, uh, to work properly, I've gotta make sure that this account, this debit is linked with this credit. Uh, this account is linked with this account, and so you have cash accounts, liability accounts, et cetera, that you have to make sure that they're, they're all linked together in some fashion to make sure that, uh, you're, you're able to properly process things without there being issues with the, with the reporting system and then the financial, uh, platform. So I was definitely able to do that, um, and I'm sure it'd be a learning process with the Munis system as well, with whatever changes that were desired, uh, a- as, you know, desired by the governing body and, and administration. Um, and as far, I know there was a, a last part to that question, um, it's escaping me at the moment, can you repeat that, uh, so I can make sure I hit on that?
Absolutely. Are you capable of managing a comprehensive general ledger and financial suite of software to gain the maximum value for the town?
Absolutely, I, I would definitely say yes, that, you know, I feel like that's what I've done everywhere else I've been. As I said, I've, I've never had a finance director, um, I've had a city clerk that I've had to train, um, in, uh, the last two cities that I've worked for. And so, you know, I've been the, the financial director, I've built the budget everywhere that I've been, and so I've managed everything from the, from the financial perspective. Uh, and so certainly would, would be able to leverage that and, and put that into, um, i- i- I believe, position the city as best as, as possible to make sure that we're, we're spending our money wisely, that we're gonna be transparent with that, that that way you can make informed decisions as the board of selectmen, um, and, and I'm providing, as the finance director and the finance department is providing, um, the, the town, the town administrative staff with the information they need to make day-to-day decisions. Uh, because that's the most important thing, is just that we're able to, um, have the best, the best knowledge uh, to make an informed decision, and I, and I think that we could certainly do that.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Our next question, selectman Mark Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. I too, Chris, want to thank you for applying for this position, um. I've, uh, have enjoyed reading through your resume, and, uh, uh, I'm very impressed with, uh, your background and your education and, uh, your commitment to public service, it's very difficult being in public service these days, so, um, you know, kudos to you for, for, for your work. Um, I have a, uh, three-part question for you, um. You know, a great deal of the work of a finance director involves providing services to the internal departments of a town. Uh, what services do you think are the most critical to support the work of our departments?
Okay, so I, I think engaging with the department heads, uh, and making sure that they feel comfortable with uh, me as the finance director and the finance department staff, um, is the most important thing that we can start. is the most important thing that we can start off with is just get off, get off on the right foot. And then you're going to have to earn that trust over time. But to make sure that they know that there's an open door there, that if they have questions or concerns, problems with you know, whether it's procedures, processes, what we have going on. That, that there's an open line of communication there. We're, we're willing to try and change if we need to, to make things better. But on the same hand, we, we have to make sure that they understand that, that there are rules in place for a reason. We have processes and procedures in place for a reason. Sometimes it may be frustrating that, that it takes us time to process a bill that they want out the door today because, hey, I, I forgot this on my desk and I need this paid today because today's the due date. And it's, you know, okay, well, we'll, we'll try and do what we can, but you know, there are times at which if you, if you're asking something of us immediately, you know, if it's hey, I need this bank account information changed today because this company has sent this to me a while ago and and I need this check mailed out today, but it's got to go to this different address or it's got to go to this different routing number, bank account number. There are things we need to make sure that this, this is legitimate, that we have to make contact with the company and make sure that, hey, that this is something that they legitimately need, that they've changed their bank accounts, that they've changed banks, you know, whatever it may be. We can't fall victim to fraud because we're, we're up against the deadline. So we have to make sure that we're very diligent when it comes to certain things, making sure that we protect the cities, the, the public's assets and resources. But at the same time, we want to be as responsive to our, to our customers as we can. And certainly internal departments are, are customers there and a lot of times most important customers because they, they do the, the work of the city, the, the providing the services to everybody else. And so we have to make sure that we provide them the tools and the resources to do their jobs. And we want to make sure that they feel comfortable talking to us when there are challenges. Want to come, whether it's payroll issues or whether it's getting bills paid, whatever it may be. They have to know that they can come to us and that it's going to be well received because we, we want to have a good relationship.
The follow-up on this is managing compliance, compliance with internal financial controls, financial policies. That's another important part of the job. And what are your preferred strategies in terms of sustaining compliance with internal controls?
So we definitely need a system of checks and balances in place. We have to make sure that, you know, that we are verifying that the proper steps are being taken. So whether it's periodic audits, I like to do, just come in and make sure, hey, you know, I just stopping by and I want to walk you, you know, wa- watch you through this process. Make sure that the, you know, city clerk is doing that or I'm doing that, you know, that we're verifying that this process is, is important and that we go through these steps. As well, we want to make sure that we have people cross-trained, that in the event there is a, something happens where somebody leaves the organization voluntarily or involuntarily. That, you know, we don't, we're not up against a wall to where, hey, nobody knows how to do this. And so we're just winging it. That's not a good situation to be in, so we have to make sure that, that we have people trained and more than just their specialty area, that they can step up in the event that we need them to. We have some redundancy in place. And that people are staying up on that. It can't just be that they learned 20 years ago how to do something. And oh yeah, I, I know how to do that. I, I learned that a long time ago. It's like riding a bike. That, that's not necessarily the case. We have to make sure that, that we are staying up to speed with what the new regulations, new compliance regulations are. You know, new things come out all the time. And we have to make sure that our processes stay relevant and, and in tune with what we need to be doing to make sure that we can protect ourselves and our, and our resources. And so just from a compliance perspective, I, I'd say just making sure that we have checks and balances in place, that we have people that are backing up other people. And we're able to make sure that we're verifying that the, our processes are appropriate. And at times we have to, you know, check, check our processes and make sure that are, are there improvements we can make on that? Because certainly, you know, that's something needs reviewed periodically as well. So trying to make sure that we listen to best practices in the industry. And if there are improvements we can make on that front, then get our staff trained on those.
Okay. And the final component to this three-part question is can you give an example of a project where you've worked with a, another department and you've worked collaboratively? And achieved success?
Yeah, so I, I think the one that comes to mind immediately was back when I was the city clerk and assistant city administrator in Cherryvale. I had a situation in which I was fairly new. I was managing the finance department, obviously. And so was working with the public works department on the painting and sandblasting of our water towers. They were need to be done, been 20 years. And so we had a contractor come in, they drained the towers. And so the sit, the the community's water system was in a little bit of a challenging state because we had to drain the towers. And so there was no pressure in the system essentially. We had to use a bladder tank to try and create some pressure. We wound up that it was somewhat of a nightmare and we had the contractor who was upset. Things weren't going as planned and, and then it was, well, they want paid. And we were still trying to make sure that they didn't just walk off the job because it wasn't going as planned. And so I worked with the public works director and tried to make sure that we worked through the process, worked through, hey, what we need to see to get them paid. And be able to verify that, look, you know, that they've done what they need to do. We're at, you know, we're 60% of the way through the project. We'll, we'll work it out to where, hey, we'll, we'll give them the, the money they need to keep going, but we have to keep some retainage to be able to to verify that, hey, we have something to be able to, to keep them moving forward. And so we were able to work together well. Once I got the public works director along with the, the contractor to come in and we sat down, had a meeting. I went out with them to the, to the work site and, and, you know, we went through everything together to where I understood where they were coming from. They understood where we were coming from and we were able to work through a, a very successful solution to be able to, to get the project moving along.
Thank you.
Okay. Next question is describe your experience and involvement in the annual budget process, including the size of budget you've worked on. How would you approach the management of the budget process? And the interaction with the administrative staff, finance committee and others? And what do you find challenging about the budget process? And how can you best add value to the local budget process in this town?
Okay. And I'll try and condense my answers a little bit. So if you'd like me to expand a little bit more, I, I will, but my understanding was I think I have until five, my time. So that gives me only 20 minutes. So I'll try and be a little bit briefer. So in terms of the budgeting process, I've been very involved. I've built the budget everywhere that I've been. Other than Cherryvale, where I was learning and assisting in, in that community. I've had everything from a, a smaller budget in, in Gerard of around 10 million to a $14 million budget in in Garnet. And here I have a $50 million budget that I manage in, in Monet. With the vast majority of that being for the electric utility, the electric utility in its, in and of itself is a significant operation as an enterprise fund. It's, it's got a lot of moving parts and components and we purchase our electricity wholesale through multiple different sources. Whether it's renewable energy, fossil fuel energy, we, we buy from a various portfolio of of power plants. And so it's just managing all of that is, is very challenging at times, but also can be very fun when it comes to just trying to figure it all out and, and find a way to hey, this is going to really pay off. You know, it's a 30-year contract, but it's going to bring such value to the community and to our residents that it's just tremendous that we're able to make this happen. So that, that's an exciting thing that I get to do and get to be involved in. And in terms of, you know, coming to Yarmouth and, and what I think I could, I could bring there would just be that approach to where, you know, we're very try, everything that I try and do is to be transparent as much as I can. Try and provide you with the information to make decisions. To provide the administration the opportunity to make the decisions that they need to be made. And as far as a challenge in the budgeting process, I would say that at times it has been, you know, in my role preparing the budget and everything that, you know, I've done. I've had very, various approaches to the, the budgeting process from the governing bodies perspective. I've had governing bodies who have basically said, wow, this is the leanest, the best budget I've seen. This was when I was in Gerard that the, the other governing body members turned to Mr. West, who was one of their governing body members as well, city council member. But he had had, had my position previously. He'd been the city administrator for the city previously. And so they kind of relied on him for his advice in a lot of situations. And so they asked Mike, said, hey, you know, what are your thoughts on this budget? And that was his comment, that he thought it was the, one of the leanest budgets he'd seen and thought it was good and thought it was, you know, we should approve it as is. And that was the budget hearing. That was the, the, the meeting and it was good to go. And then I've had budget sessions, governing bodies that we had nine different meetings, nine different three-hour meetings. Where, you know, we would take the approach of going down from a line in, in a line item by line item approach to where it was, all right, in the housing department, because we had some public housing when I was in Garnet. And the governing body felt like we were spending too much money on postage. And so they wanted to cut the postage budget from $100 a year to $75 a year. And then the governing body spent about 45 minutes discussing whether they wanted to cut that $25 out of the, out of the housing department's budget. In a $15 million budget. So I, I will say that at times that can be a little bit frustrating or challenging, just trying to move through those types of situations because I'm trying to keep you know, when we're up against the deadline, because the state of Kansas had a deadline that you have to have a budget passed by August 15th. And when, you know, we're spending, they weren't our, on our seventh three-hour meeting and we're talking about $25 and postage, that can just be challenging. But certainly something you work through and, and you know, th- those are questions that you have to answer and try and justify. Hey, this is, this is what we're doing. It's a budget. It's a best guess. And so we're, we're trying to set, set ourselves up for success and and we don't, we don't expect to spend every dollar. You know, we're hoping that this is going to be, we're going to come in under this. I budget conservatively with everything that I do. But you know, it's, it's something that, you know, you have to make sure you're on board with everybody else's approach as well. And that everybody is aligned when it comes to the budgeting process on, on, you know, what they want to see and how I reflect that in the budget.
Thank you.
Chris, how do you apply cost reduction strategies while maintaining organizational efficiency? And good services to finances, customers, both internal to the organization and external constituents?
So with external constituents, I would say one of the key things is, is knowledge and education, try and help them understand why, you know, why we're doing what we're doing, the why behind everything is incredibly important. And then, you know, help, help to articulate the cost benefit that, you know, if we, if we take money away here, then, you know, this is where we're, we're likely to have a an impact. And so just trying to articulate the, you know, be, be very transparent and open and and generate that level of trust between yourself and the, the community and the, and the populace. From an internal perspective, I would say, though typically I try and work with my department heads to provide them with the opportunity to bring me solutions. I feel like that works best because at the end of the day, they typically know their departments better than I do in terms of where they can effectively make cuts or make efficiencies. Say, hey, look, you're spending too much money in this area. I need, you know, if I can identify something great that, look, your telephone bill shouldn't be that. I know you can get telephone service for a lot cheaper than that. Or is there something we can do instead of that? Do you need a fax machine? You know, in today's world, you can get other mediums, whether it's email, whether it's, you can set up a online system to where you have a fax number and, and anytime anybody that tries to fax you instead of it coming over through, on a fax line, that may cost you $90 a month for that fax line. It, it costs you per fax at 40 cents a fax. So, you know, it's something that there are opportunities potentially to have cost savings that I can identify. But in most cases, it's something that, hey, we've got to find a way to cut here. Chief of police, you know, I'm asking you, can you find a way to, to cut, you know, 2%? Now, where, where can you find some efficiencies here? And so they, they come to me with, you know, hey, look, you know, this is what I can do. But these are going to be the impacts if I do that. And so we try and work through that and sometimes we're able to find some things. Sometimes we go back to the governing body and say, hey, you know, this is what we're looking at. You know, we can, we can do it. We can meet the ask, but if we do, we're going to have to delay this, this project that we're looking at trying to do. We're going to have to delay this vehicle purchase that, you know, we, we we're hoping to be able to replace, you know, these two vehicles this year. Because they have over 100,000 miles on them and they're maintenance hogs. But in order to meet the, the goal, we need to be able to to reduce some costs somewhere and this is the best way. So, you know, there, there are those opportunities, I think, to, to look at that, but and at times if it's something that, look, there's just the, nobody's willing to work with us on, hey, I, I can't find anything. There's no efficiencies that I can find. I need every dime that you're giving me. Then it may be a more intrusive approach. I don't like to take that approach. I like to, to build that trust and allow the department heads to come to me with those things. But, you know, there, there may be something where it's, okay, well, that doesn't seem you know, legitimate to me that you can't find anything at all that you feel like I could delay or I could, I could cut this, I could make an efficiency here. You know, you've got to bring me something, even if it's something that you don't like. But so that way it gives me an opportunity to, to take that to, you know, to upper level management and say, no, this is what, this is the situation that we're in.
Thank you.
Kind of corollary to the, to the question that you just, just answered. Please describe your experience in financial planning and revenue and expenditure forecasting. And how would you approach multi-year financial planning for the town of Yarmouth?
The, the multi-year forecasting and budgeting is something that I'm a huge proponent of. I like to try and do trend analysis, with the big reason why I did the rebuild the chart of accounts in the past. And like to try and make sure that we're able to forecast for the future, what my expenses are looking like they're going to be. What, what our revenues are looking like they're going to be. And so that way we can conservatively estimate how, you know, how much we need to allocate for various programs, projects, et cetera. And then hopefully wind up with, with left, leftover resources because we did budget conservatively. But at the end of the day, it's something that, you know, I try and make sure that I provide a monthly report to my governing body that, and I've done this for years, just showing, you know, what that trend has looked like over the past seven years. And then try and forecast from a budgeting perspective and a capital improvements plan perspective. You know, where, where we're going in the future, because it's, you have to make sure that you have a plan for the future. Planning is the most important thing in my opinion, even if, things are always going to change. You're never going to have something work out exactly the way that you planned it. But without a plan, you're, you're reactionary, you're chasing your tail and things do not work out well at all. In my experience, you have to be able to have a plan in place to help guide your decision-making process. And so that's, you know, my approach is just to make sure that I, I'm able to put together a long-term vision, a long-term plan based around the goals that you provided to me, saying, this is what, you know, we want to try and do. So, you know, when it's building a wastewater plant. Okay, you know, what's that look like from a cost perspective? And where's the revenue is going to come from to pay for that? And over the next five, 10, 20 years, you know, this is how we're going to, to pay for that. And, and what does that mean for everything else in the community? What does that mean for our other departments? Are, are they going to have to, to pick up some slack when it comes to, you know, the finances that, you know, we're going to have to reduce so- somewhere else to be able to make that ma- make those payments? Or is it, you know, that we're able to continue to move forward? But I think it's also very important when you're looking at those projections to try and extrapolate out in any significant outliers. If some, if this were to happen. You know, what would we do? How would we respond? What would this, what would this look like? I know the last community that I worked for in Garnet. We had one utility customer, one water customer that, that purchased 30% of our water, about half of our water in town, 50% of our water usage went to them, but 30% of our revenue also came from them. And so that would have been huge had they decided it was an ethanol plant. If, if, if the ethanol market went down. If they just closed up the plant, well, there goes 30% of my water revenue over the course of the year. And so how am I going to pay for this brand-new water treatment plant that I'm banking on that revenue? To, to make those payments over the course of the next 20 years? So you have to make sure that you're, you're thinking about those things and planning for those, for those things because, and hopefully that never happened. But we have to have a backup plan. We have to have something in place to make sure that, you know, if these things occur, how do we respond?
Thank you.
Okay, Chris, what's your experience in making public presentations of financial systems? And financial materials in front of both large and small groups? And are you comfortable presenting materials in front of a TV camera and a large crowd and even town? And are you comfortable presenting materials in front of a TV camera and a large crowd and even town meeting situation?
Absolutely. Uh I've I've never given financial um. Presentation, I suppose, in front of a a TV camera. Um I have been in front of a TV camera numerous times when it came to uh emergency management type situations. We have a a major storm roll through that. Um you know, did substantial damage to about a third of the town when I was in Gerard. And and so, you know, we had a lot of TV uh media there, and so gave multiple interviews. I've given interviews every place that I've been. Um but most of the financial conversations I've had and presentations I've given have been uh in front of the governing body. Um for budget uh budget work sessions and or the the budget public hearing. Um I do give, you know, like I said, monthly financial reports to the governing body as well, uh where I talk about the financials and where we're where we currently stand. Um I did, when I was in both Gerard and in Garnet, um as well give the uh financial budgetary. Um presentations uh to the governing body, which were broadcast on Facebook Live. So while it wasn't television, it was still, you know, broadcast out there on the internet uh for anybody to watch. And so. Um you know, I did ha- I do have ample experience presenting to uh both the the governing body as well as to the general public when it comes to. Um financial materials and and others.
Thank you.
Mark. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. Chris, uh. If you were hired, what would be your top three priorities during your first ninety days on the job?
I'd say the top would be meeting with all of you and uh my department heads and and um the administrative staff. Uh make sure that I have a good relationship with town administrator, uh with you as the selectmen, um just to develop that relationship. And then um al- also making sure that I understand what the goals of everybody are. So trying to understand what you feel as if the opportunities for improvement are. What the administration feels like the opportunities for improvement are, um as well as department heads. And then um my staff as well, obviously, as far as the finance department staff. Uh developing those relationships and making sure that they feel as if, hey, uh you know, we have a leader here, we have a. A supervisor who's got our back and who um is going to try and make sure that uh we're well, we are well-supported and that that we can trust. And so. Uh you you have to make sure you can bridge all those gaps to uh to make sure everyone feels uh that they are trusted, that they're a trusted team member. Um and that, you know, I can step into a a good environment where there's a a good culture and just help grow and build that culture. Um and and try and make sure then, um lastly, I'd say just to try and make sure that we're from a. A financial perspective, get a good handle on where we're at, where we've been, and then what the goals are moving forward from a financial perspective. You know, wh- what uh, you know, this is looking like from our large capital projects with the wastewater plant. Uh you know, try to get a handle on, all right, immediately over the next, you know, three months, six months. Wh- what do I need to prioritize? Where do I need to go? And how do I make sure that we're staying on top of this so nothing falls through cracks?
Thank you.
So the next question I have for you um is this, if you were selected for this position. And you chose to accept it. Tell us about an area in which you would need the most support to be successful.
I I. I think my first thought to that question, I guess, would just be uh. Personally, um more personal thing, because professionally, I think I, you know, I'd have no challenges being um successful. Uh but personally, just acclimating to the environment, um you know, I I think it's it sounds great to, you know, being on the Cape, uh. I've never been there, but sounds wonderful. Um I've, you know, always wanted to either be in the mountains or um on the ocean. My wife and I have talked about that, but. For my family, I think, uh just helping make sure that we um acclimate well to the environment. My wife, um. I love her to death, uh but really want to try and help her get engaged in the community and involved and. Um and and so just trying to, you know, make sure that uh now my wife and kids feel at home, I guess. Uh because that's, you know, happy, happy wife, happy life, so.
All right, so I'm not gonna let you get away with a political answer. So let me, let me continue. Out of your very strong skill set. What is the one you think you would need the most help with? In in performing your duties as a finance director in Yarmouth?
Okay, I would probably say um. One thing that I would really like to. Make sure that I I don't. I guess. Miss on would be from a communication standpoint, just making sure that those lines of communication are are strong and there. Um with all the department heads, with with you as the governing body, with the administration team. Um because communication is incredibly important, and so would want to just make sure that. Um you know, I I'm provided, when supported with, hey, you know, this person is um. May may not be somebody who's comfortable in coming to you, and so I may have to make more of an effort to go to them and seek them out. Um otherwise, things may fall through the crack, because I expect, hey, I'm gonna be having a whole bunch of things thrown at me all at once. Um trying to learn everything and and if my chief of police is somebody who'll just, you know, sit over there and and mind his own business. Um until called upon, uh but you know, there's all these things that then are are getting just dropped because, you know. I'm not getting that, because previous finance director, s- you know. S- solicited those. Well, if if those types of of things or tha- that has been. Um a successful endeavor in the past, that's, hey, look, this is how it's been ran and and these people kind of need that. Um it'd be helpful for me to make su- to know that, hey, this is kind of uh the environment that I'm stepping into, that I need to make sure that. Wh- wh- I need to handle things a little bit differently um wi- with these people, because they need a little bit more bringing along to. Uh to get the information that that I need, or if they have problems, um they're not gonna be as forthcoming with this, so I have to kind of seek that out.
How important you think communications are um in the position of finance director and why?
I I think it's paramount importance. I I think, and no matter whether it's, you know. In any role, in my mind, any role especially that is a supervisory level role. Uh managing people is the the most challenging part of the job, and it's the most important part of the job. And communication is the key to making sure that you're able to overcome those challenges. Uh and so we we're able to have good relationships, um we have trust, and we're able to make sure that. Um especially from a finance per- uh perspective, when everything runs through the finance department to whether it's. Uh getting bills paid, whether it's, you know, getting people paid, uh you know, for for payroll purposes. You know, if if something is screwed up in finance, it's it's a big deal. And so we have to communicate well to try and minimize mistakes as much as possible. Um because without effective communication or efficient communication, for that matter, uh you wind up with more problems than. Then you can really handle. So you have to have good communication, otherwise things start to really fall apart.
Um it's obvious to me that your oral communication skills are very strong. Are you written? Communication skills as strong as your oral s- communication skills?
I would say yes, uh you know, my monthly report to the governing body is, uh it varies in length, but. Um I think the longest one I've given is probably eight pages. Uh and I and I don't like those, because I I sometimes I worry that they don't get read. Um but you know, I I think at at times when it warrants it, I am, you know, very effective with communicating um. And and written word as well, when when need be.
Okay, thank you. I will go to darkest.
Tell us about a time when you worked to create an exceptional customer service focus with other departments and or the public.
So. Uh here in Monette, uh we've had some challenges at times with um departments that. Uh you know, there there'd be some some changeover. We have some um. In the in the city hall, uh administration office, my city clerk department. Uh there was a lot of transition, and so I wound up with uh new staff members. Uh we we had multiple people uh get sick and leave the organization right before I got here or um and then right after I got here. And so. Uh there is, um there've been, there's one person in my uh on my city hall staff team that's been here for longer than two years. Uh and so there was a lot of transition there. Uh and it was challenging for a lot of my departments, uh because they just, there there was struggles at city hall. And so we've had to make sure from a customer service standpoint that we train people well, that it's it's imperative that you have. Uh a good customer service mindset, a good customer service approach. Uh and, you know, sometimes you have a bad day, uh but you can't let that be seen. You have to make sure that. Uh you still put on that good face and you have good positive interaction, even if somebody may not be giving you that in return. Uh and then, you know, when they, when they leave and you get a chance to to wind down and vent, take a break, you know, whatever it may be. Uh you know, then we can, we can have those conversations, but you know, you can vent to your coworker or or a. Uh or colleague, um to your supervisor, you know, but at the end of the day, we need to try and make sure that we always have that good customer service approach. Uh both internally and externally. Um and so, you know, when when it came to other departments at times, it was, well, you know, why are we having to do this? You know, that they they should be able to to figure this out, and you know, we shouldn't be having to to play this role. They should be able to take those calls themselves. You know, we don't need to handle their work orders or whatever it may be. And so it's just, hey, you know, this is, this is why. You explain the why, I think, and um nine times out of ten, when people understand the why. Uh behind, you know, the the decision or the pro- the process, I think that typically winds up that that resolves most, you know, almost all your problems. Because uh now they they can buy in, and wh- we buy in is what we're, is what our objective is, is trying to achieve that. Uh that buy-in from everybody. So uh communication's important to educate, to provide the why, and then that helps you win that trust and win that. That investment on their part.
Thank you.
Peter. How about your experience in the formation of capital improvement program and capital budgets? Please describe your approach in interactions here as well as what you may do to improve capital planning processes.
So I've been involved in, uh for for instance, right now, we're in the process of building a new maintenance facility for. Um for our parks, and so that that's was supposed to be a uh a two hundred thousand dollar project here a couple of years ago. And now it's a one point two million dollar project. We just opened the bids here a couple of weeks ago. The cost is have just gone crazy. Um but unfortunately, we we really can't kick the can down the road any further. This is the uh governing body here has done that for the past decade. Um and um we've gotten to the point to where it's a liability. I'm gonna wind up with a staff person getting hurt if we don't do something before long. Um we've got uh multiple deficiencies in the in the structures and the current structure, so. Uh we're having to move forward, and so, you know, we were looking through, you know, how how can we try and uh make this as a. As reasonable of a cost as possible and try and do some um. Uh addendums, trying to say, what can we do in-house? Now, so we figured out, okay, well, I can, I can pull out the electrical piece and do that in-house. I have electric lineman. We have an electric utility here, like I was saying earlier. And so I'll have them do the wiring. You know, if there's things that I can do in-house to to save some resources. Um and still wind up with a good product at the end of the day, you know, let's try and do that. So uh we're we're looking at that um as well as uh. A- as as far as the planning and improving planning processes uh for the future. You know, my big thing is is just trying to make sure we're all on the same page with what we're, with what our goals are, what are our, what we're trying to accomplish. Um my last city I worked for, the city of Garnet, uh did not have a capital improvement reserve plan or fund. Um nor an equipment reserve um plan or fund. Uh same thing was wh- when I was in Gerard. And so I convinced those governing bodies eventually, um it took me a while, especially there in Garnet. Um but I convinced them eventually to establish those funds, and that was gonna be uh an asset to the organization and that that planning was gonna help us. Uh avoid the situation that they were in with the water plant, um with a hundred-year-old water plant that they've been talking about. Uh making improvements to for the past thirty years, and replacing for the past thirty years, but that, well, we don't have the money, so we're just gonna, well, we'll talk about it again next year. And thirty years later, it's still, we'll talk about it again next year, but then it's, oh, you can't. The EPA steps in and says. This is a problem now. We're gonna mandate you do it if you don't do it, so now you have to do it. Um and so, you know, if we have that capital improvement plan in place or that equipment reserve plan in place, it makes it, it makes it so that. We don't wind up with ten-year-old police cars and and these, you know, thirty-year-old uh car at our airport um that. That you know, that doesn't have air conditioning. Um so, you know, with that in place, uh we were able to make some substantial improvements to our. Um to our capital projects, uh to our assets, uh as well as to our equipment. And um, you know, the the one governing body member who was uh that I worked with the most in terms of trying to get them. On board with my, you know, with my goals on the on the financial planning and long-term thought. Um you know, when I left the organization in Garnet after four years, he said, Chris, you know, that. Uh I know I disagreed with you on this from the from the beginning, but, you know, I I have to tell you, that's the most important and best thing, I think, that you did in your four years here was. Was convince me of that and get that going, because that puts us in a much better financial position. Um so I I was really proud of that. I think we did a lot of other uh very important and good things while I was there as well, but. Um but he was the one through the budgeting process that constantly was just. I I I struggled getting on board with this thought process of planning for the future and thinking about, um you know, what we're gonna buy ten years from now. I- is important to start socking that money away now or planning for that money now, you know, I'm I'm gonna put twenty thousand away for the next ten years, so I have two hundred thousand sitting there. That was a very foreign concept, and so um, you know, that that's something that I think. In my mind, um I I just try and make sure that we we take that long-term approach to planning.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh Dan.
Chris, can you give us an example of a failure that you've experienced and how you handled it, what you learned from it?
I would say my first department led up, ah sorry, department head level hire. Um when I was uh had just been hired uh to be the city administrator in Gerard, I. Ha- I had had to hire for a public works director and my governing body was split. Um it was. You know, my mayor was opposed to hiring the individual I wanted to hire. He didn't get a vote, though, unless i- in the event of a tie. And my council president was um opposed. They, uh my council president was good friends with one of the applicants and wanted me to hire that individual. I went through the hiring process, um interview process and and recommended this other gentleman. Who um checked out just terrific on their resume. I called the references. Everything was just wonderful about this individual. I thought that they were gonna be the best hire that I'd ever make, um just from an, from an experience standpoint. Um unfortunately, it it appeared as if, hey, just. Everything that he he once knew and was able to do and learned, uh it it was no longer there, unfortunately. Um managing staff was incredibly challenging for him, um and so wound up being that it was less than six months and I had to let him go. Um that was a very difficult conversation for for me to have with with that individual, as well as with the uh city council. Uh being a new administrator, and it was, you know, I I had the two most powerful ele- elected officials. Uh that were basically sitting there telling me, I told you so. And so, but it was, look, you know, it still wasn't the right individual. I still feel as if I made the right decision. I I would make the same decision again if I had to do it. Um and so, but I didn't want to bring anybody else um into that scenario, um because I felt as if my. My staff there, it was just kind of a hornet's nest. Um I had good staff, but they just, they didn't get along well. There was a lot of infighting and. And it was, the level of productivity was incredibly low, and so I took a much more active role. Um it was something I didn't want to do by any means. I do not like to micromanage, but in that situation, I felt like I had to. I had just had to let go of my init- my first major hire, um being a new administrator, and so I'm sure my governing body was questioning their hire of me at that time. And so I I took a much more invested role. And I had every, every one of those eight and uh public works crew members come in every morning uh for almost six months. Um and uh we, I worked through with them what the game plan was for that day. And so, you know, we we wound up, in my mind, for that six months, eight, eight people for half an hour every day from eight to eight thirty. You know, that's four hours of productivity that we were losing every single day. But I I tell you, we accomplished more in that next, in in that six months than I feel like we did probably the the two years prior. The first two months of that, uh we accomplished so much, and it just, it was working very well. Uh it eventually got to the point to where I felt like, all right, we've been doing this for for too long now. I've got these guys in a good system and a good, in a good. Um in a good routine, and so now it's, I'm gonna go ahead and try and make a hire and and get uh somebody in here to manage this department now. Because it's in a good sta- it's in a good spot. And so uh I ended up hiring again for a new public works director. Uh hired that individual, uh they worked out terrifically, and so um I thought it wa- ended up working out very well. But it was very challenging. It was a failure, um and and something, but I I thought, I thought at the end of the day, it worked out, it worked out well for the organization.
Thank you.
Mark. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, why should we hire you as the next Director of Finance for the town of Yarmouth?
I would say that I would bring a, a level of government trust and transparency and just. Try and make sure that I, I'm very responsive to the needs of the citizenry, of the staff and of the governing body. And try and every day make sure that I'm, I'm working to make Yarmouth the best place that it can possibly be. To, so we, someplace that's a destination community. I think it, you know, already is being there on the Cape, but. Keep it that way as someplace that people want to live, work and play.
Thank you.
At this point, Chris. We're going to suspend with the questions, but what I want to do is give you the opportunity. To kind of make your final pitch to the, to the board and feel free to bring up any areas that. In your mind were important and perhaps not explored in the course of the interview process. And take whatever time you need to do this, not to exceed five minutes.
Oh, I, I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity to interview. I, I won't ask anything in, in the event that. You know, I would ask in the event that you do decide to, to offer me the position and it's some, and it's, we come to an agreement. I, I would like the opportunity to come out and visit the community just to make sure it's a good fit for myself as well as you feel it's a good fit for the community. But, you know, with that, you know, my, I would just like to say thank you very much for the opportunity. And if that does come to fruition, I'd love to have a chance to sit down and have lunch with you all and, and just get a feel for, you know, what you would like to see out of the next. You know, five years from the finance director and, and what direction you feel like things should be heading. So. You know, I, I want to make sure we, we'd have a good relationship. I want to be in, in good communication with all of you. Obviously, you know, through the chain of command, working with the administrator, but, you know, I want to make sure that I'm very responsive to what, you know. Your guys' goals and vision is for the, for the community because at the end of the day. That's what, that's what we're all there for, to serve, to serve the public and the community and make sure it's the best place it can possibly be. So. Thank you again for the opportunity to, to interview and if it doesn't work out, I sure wish I'd have been able to make it up there. To at least see the Cape, but you know, hopefully I'll still get that opportunity.
Thank you very much, Chris. We appreciate it.
Sorry for running over on my time as well.
Five minutes before the next one.
Hey, there's Chris. He's a nice man. We all have our little snacks.
We're interviewing somebody on the strikes on there right now. Mentioned this can be a fully electric Jeep next year. Yeah, complete plug in. It was good. It was productive. It was great conference. Got to enjoy some downtime as well and saw my son a few times. Yes. Yes, it was all excellent. Thank you very much. Oh, yes. I flew into Boston. It was about 30 degrees cooler and enjoyed a nice traffic jam coming out of Logan Airport. Half hour probably, yeah. It's, it was okay. You know, talking about our kids that were at home. I hadn't seen them in about 10 days, so. Where are the sessions? Is it Endicott?
Perspective is everything.
Everybody all set? Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mike Stone. I'm the chairman of the board. With me to my left is Selectman McGurran, Dorcas McGurran. To her left is Peter Q. Smith. He has to have his initial, I, it's a long story. To my left is Dan Horgan and then Mark Forrest. You know our town administrator, I believe. Bill Scott, our assistant. And you've met our consultant. And Sarah. The way we did the first interview and we're going to try to be very consistent. With all three candidates. Is I, I skipped an opening statement because my questions are going to be general enough for you to cover that. And then we're going to go through a series of questions rotating from selectmen to selectmen. I'll go first, then Dorcas, then Peter. Then Dan and then Mark. And if a selectman has a follow-up question on any particular question, they can come in out of sequence. On that one question. And then we'll give you some time at the end. To talk about whatever you want. You can kind of summarize things. If there's areas that you feel. We didn't explore that you think are relevant or important to your candidacy for this position, you can feel free to, it's your time. You can use it however you wish.
Thank you.
I missed anything? Bob, you want to make a brief introduction?
No, I don't think so. I, I'd say let's jump right in.
Are you all set to come right in? All right.
I'd have Mr. McColl down here this evening. We had a very pleasurable experience interviewing him during the, during the first round. And I, I think he's got some great experience, especially with the infrastructure piece.
Thank you. All right. Your first question is this, please provide us with an overview of your education and experience relative this. To this position and what made you decide to apply? What technical skills and certifications do you possess that will be valuable in your role as finance director?
Okay. First off, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for having me here tonight. I have been a lifelong learner. I hold a bachelor's degree in business administration. I hold a master's degree in finance. I have a pretty varied background, work experience upon review of my resume. You would find that I have been in different sectors of the economy, mostly in the service industry. And helping to assist people to achieve their desires and goals. Whether that was through being a manager and project manager for 14 years at Blue Cross Blue Shield in Massachusetts. Where I oversaw call center processes, thousands of phone calls a day. Serving the providers, serving the members of Blue Cross Blue Shield, managing a team of about 40 employees. And overseeing cost recovery for things like lawsuits and liability claims where. Determining that Blue Cross Blue Shield was not responsible for claim payment, thus pushing that onus onto. Responsible parties in auto accidents, workers comp accidents, thus becoming somewhat skilled in cost containment. And risk management. That was my first exposure in my professional career. My professional career is quite varied. I was a small business owner on my own for a while, operated a marketing firm, helping small businesses with, you know, their online presence. Internet sales, social media at the time. I've worked in higher education where I was. At one point a vice president of corporate relations where I was working with the corporate sector across New England with a team of people. To promote educational opportunities for corporations to manage their succession planning. So that they can mitigate the risk to their organization from losing talent to retaining that talent, training that talent. And ultimately promoting that talent. I went on to earn a master's degree from New England College of Business and then operated my own financial planning practice. Through New York Life and Mainstay Investments. The New York Life office in Boston is the largest New York Life office. In the country, outperforming Manhattan and had a, a quality career there for three years. Was the number two ranked agent considered in the rookie class and did well there financially. Did have a young family at the time. It was a commission-based role. It was somewhat volatile at times and for the benefit of my family. I ended up accepting a position at the city of Quincy. At that time, that was about eight years ago. At that time, I was not actually looking for a position. I was actively operating my financial planning practice. And the city of Quincy was an account that I was servicing for their retirement needs and risk mitigation, like life insurance and investments and. Rollovers of 457 plans, things like that. And so at that time, the director of the planning department. Approached me because I was working with an employee who was the finance director in the planning department. He was retiring after 40 years of municipal service. And at that point, I really wasn't considering a career in the city. However, this kind of came across and. I was talking it through with the planning director and I accepted the role as the finance director of the planning department in the city of Quincy. That was a critical time in the city. They needed somebody that could step right in and understand the finances right away. And the city of Quincy was undergoing a massive urban redevelopment project utilizing a, a diff district in the downtown area. And to summarize it at a very high level, knocked down about half of the downtown area. Rebuilt all of the infrastructure underneath and then built it up and used the diff process to alleviate the burden. On the taxpayers and the homeowners. Spent about five years in the planning department, looking at all kinds of activity of. Money through HUD for CDBG, for low to moderate income folks, for housing, working on mass dot type grants. All the executive offices of the Commonwealth, working with them to find grant solutions and funding solutions for projects. That would again ease the burden on taxpayers and not necessarily roll into bonded. Type of projects or roll into any type of property tax increases or general fund. Dipping into the general fund for these projects. So I spent about five years there. At the time, we had a CDBG excess of funds and we had a timeliness issue where. We were needing to spend about $3 million of CDBG funds. This was under the. Previous federal administration in Washington where any unspent federal money that was given to local communities. Would be retracted and possibly spent on other federal initiatives. So there was a sense of urgency. To spend any money that was sitting, and I don't want to say idle because it wasn't just laying there. There were plans for it. But what we decided to do, and I worked with the DPW commissioner directly, was to start using that money to pave. Roads that were in low to moderate income areas, sidewalks and build parks with the parks director. So we were able to spend down the 3 million plus on projects to help our most vulnerable population in those areas. That's where I built up a relationship with the DPW commissioner. He had an opening on his team for a director of finance. He offered me the position. I went to speak to the mayor, got his blessing, and I took the position at the DPW. I did so not because I wanted to leave the planning department, but because I was really looking to learn some more about the operations of a municipality. So after spending the time in the planning department, I've now spent three years at the DPW. And it's going at the same pace I was going at the planning department. The city of Quincy downtown has been rebuilt. There's a tremendous amount of growth there, both residential and commercial. And it's just, I'm a resident there as well. So 20 years ago. You had absolutely no reason to go to downtown Quincy. Now you can pick any restaurant, any type of shopping. Resources, housing resources, open space. So the development in the downtown area has been great. What I've been focusing on now with the DPW is specifically massive infrastructure projects. So we have a $100 million capital improvement project for paving. We have a $40 million capital improvement project for water mains. We spend seven to 10 million dollars a year on sewer. That all comes through my desk. We built the seawall. We had a, a major catastrophe in town. We had a, a name storm that came through in 2018. It was a nor'easter and it wasn't snow. It was more like a hurricane, a winter hurricane. And if you're familiar with the city of Quincy, it's like a sea-shaped coastline and it points northeast. So the water was just pushed from Boston Harbor right into Quincy. And unfortunately, the lowest lying area is a peninsula area and that was, that was pretty much wiped out, cut off. And that's where quite a few of our most vulnerable citizens live as far as economics and, and our seniors. So. Took us a while working with FEMA, built, just recently built a seawall along there, about a $20 million project. 14 million of that was bonded funds, 6 million of that was FEMA hazard mitigation, coastal zone management type grants. All that came through my desk. And so I managed the, the budgets at the DPW and it's 140 employee organization. I oversee everything from trash and recycling budgets to the highway budget, to the engineering budgets, sewer and water enterprise funds. That's a $55 million operation on its own and also oversee all the metering and the customer service for the water department. So. I have a pretty broad scope of municipal experience that's coupled with my, you know, private sector experience. Which drew me to, to this position. Quite happy where I am. It, it's not that I'm trying to get out of there. There's a little bit of a logjam. And the promotional opportunities in the city and I feel like now is a good time for me. And Yarmouth is near and dear to my heart and I can talk a little bit about that an hour later, but I've spent a lot of time in Yarmouth over the years.
Thank you. I'll go to Selectman McGurran.
We'll stay with bonding. The town presently has a standard and poorest bond rating of A, double A plus. And we are very anxious to reach triple A status. How would you approach fulfilling the goal of raising the town's bond rating?
I think the bond rating is related to economic development activities in my mind. I think stagnant communities end up suffering in the bond rating. I think there's a certain amount of risk when you want to improve your bond rating. And certainly the project that you've undertaken here with your wastewater plant and your sewer project is a tremendous. Investment in the future of the town, which would lead to future increases, I think, in the bond ratings. And I looked, I printed up a bunch of information here. Your debt service and the schedule looks, looks great. I think the finances in the city are, are strong and that would lead to the bond rating you currently have. And I think that. Bonding agencies look for opportunity to invest too as well as far, as far as that. And I think Yarmouth with the project that you have put in place. This board, you know, it was 50 years of stagnant discussion about the regionalization of sewer in the mid-Cape. Right? And in the last two years, it's moved giant steps forward. So. It's a long answer to it, but I think the continuing investment in economic development will lead to a bond rating improvement. It's a long answer to it, but I think the continuing investment in economic development will lead to uh a bond rating improvement.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Oh, selectman Peter Smith. I'm sorry, Peter Q. Smith.
Get it right, Mr. Chairman. Um Neil, um again, welcome. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
It it. You've already hit on this, but I'm gonna the the question's written out, so I'm gonna I'm gonna read it as read it as written. Um do you have experience in infrastructure financing and coordination of the financing of a major capital project? The town, as you well know, is is in the uh two hundred and seven million dollar phase one of an eight phased wastewater plan. With the financing fully developed only for phase one, how would you approach the oversight for the major expenditures in phase one? While providing leadership and planning for the next phases?
Okay, so yes, I do have the experience, which I highlighted a little bit earlier. Um I did read through uh. Quite thoroughly the wastewater funding program recommendations. This is from December twenty twenty two. Um I'll just operate under the assumption that these are still, you know, sort of the targeted uh funding sources for the project. Um and you know, I think that this is um very creative. I think it's creative uh process. I think the use of multiple funding sources helps to mitigate the risk in a project. Uh and I'll speak just quite frankly. Prior to uh the city of Quincy's development. We had put kind of all of our eggs in one basket with one big kind of just. Project and not really well defined. And we had one vendor come in and kind of. Sell us everything, including the kitchen sink, right? About what their ideas were. And what we learned from their failure was that the project of the redevelopment of the downtown area, looking at it as one project. Was um the biggest risk. And so when I look out at the boards in the hallway. And I see the map broken out into eight contracts. As a finance person, that makes me happy. Because that means we can hold accountability based on those types of contracts. Obviously, building the wastewater treatment plant is the priority and keeping that on target. Um you know. Any project management has three real components to it. Are you uh on time? Are you at or under budget preferably? And is it done with quality? So those are the three things that I instill in anytime I'm looking at a project. Some of the projects that we have going on the city of Quincy, I'm the finance director, sitting at the table, doing the math. There are other projects that I lead specifically that impact my scope and my world. And I try to be as proactive as possible and make sure that the budgetary piece is, for me, is the most important piece. I'm not sure if I got all your thoughts to your question.
I think you've hit on it, plus what you had said previously.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Go to selectman Dan Horgan.
Hey Neil, thanks so much for coming down and put yourself forward for this. Um so this is a question about um technology. Um how would you rate your familiarity with the technology and financial systems, including Munis if you have any? Um and share with us a time that you've used the technology to improve the performance in financial transactions or tracking or analysis. And are you capable of managing a comprehensive general ledger and financial suite of software to gain the maximum for our town?
Sure. So I am familiar with Munis. I've been using it for eight years at the city of Quincy. Um there's some basic reporting that you can pull out of Munis. There's year to date budget reports. There's purchase order um. Open purchase order reports. There's um purchase order to GL reports. There's expenditure reports by. Uh we use organ object code, so you can run. I was on it today this morning, looking at payroll with my team. I have a team of three payroll clerks. And we were looking at discrepancies in the payroll and we had, it really comes down to doing some forensic accounting. So we had people that were being paid correctly, but they were being paid out of the wrong uh codes. And we were able to identify this and we have a process in place to rectify it uh and just using. Uh output output from Munis. So Munis, you're able to run reports and they typically generate into a a PDF format. You also have the ability to dump that into Excel and then manipulate the data to show the way that you want it to show if you're using charts or or graphs. Uh or you know, trying to show trends. So being able to export that information into Excel is a great uh opportunity within Munis. I'm quite comfortable with information technology and I could just speak right off the bat. The first project I took on when I. Came over to the DPW was that our water billing software was being sunsetted by our vendor, meaning they were no longer going to support it. Uh my predecessor had two years of notice and there was no real activity. Uh granted, that was through COVID as well, so there was some challenges there with uh resource availability. So no blame, but when I got there, I had to implement this software within three months. And there's a team of people that need to use this software for billing and servicing our customers. So we have about twenty five thousand customers in Quincy, so yeah, for water. And so we upgraded to this new uh software platform. Uh and it was challenging, but I've been managing projects for a long time, uh able to identify the um kind of the roadblocks. The critical path in a project using Microsoft Project and then obviously one of the budget constraints. So we implemented that technology. Along with some new, um we use AMI readings. Okay, so AMI versus AMI for water readings. AMI would be uh tower readings where you have a signal at every endpoint. Goes to a tower, that tower points to the software, and that's how you get your reads. You do not have to go manually around and get reads in the neighborhoods. They come in electronically. So we had nine towers in the city previously. We now have thirteen because I upgraded four new towers. Uh and now we're phasing out the old tower system because the signaling is um. Is going by the wayside and we've upgraded to these new towers to capture those signals. So I think. The the key with any finance director or chief financial officer now, and. If you Google it, you'll find plenty of articles on it is there's a direct relationship between the CFO CFO role and IT. Because there's such a reliance now on information technology and the day to day operations of any business, including municipalities. And to be able to go back and forth between the technology and the finances, I think is critical and I'm quite comfortable with that. Thank you.
We go to selectman Mark Corst.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and I too would like to um thank Neil for taking an interest in Yarmouth. Um I'm not going to use my question to elicit the Yarmouth connection. I'll save that for a later questioner.
That yeah, that's.
But I am very interested, but I am interested in that question. Um. I also want to uh comment about Quincy. Um in my past life, I did a lot of work in Quincy with. Mayor Koch and the staff and um you talk about a city that is. Spending a lot of money and doing a lot of work and and doing some great things. Um the city's been, it's just been remarkable to see all the progress over there.
Quite visionary and he's done a fantastic job.
He is. Uh in my past life, my job was to help get federal funding for a lot of the projects, so. Um so I I appreciate that experience. Uh my question is is more towards the the nature of the job itself, the being a finance director. And I think one of the things I've learned in Yarmouth is that. Um a really good finance director provides critical services to the. Internal departments of a of of a municipality. Um. What services do you think, um Neil, are the most critical to support the success and operations of the other departments in a community?
Sure. So I think budget development obviously is critical and understanding um expense trending. Uh there's probably, uh I would imagine, and and every community is going to have this, but a community like Yarmouth. It's probably exponential. Seasonal spending becomes a challenge. Uh I'm sure that there's uh part time positions and looking through the budget, I've seen that some part time positions have been moved to full time positions. Uh and so obviously there's a need there with a growing uh municipality. Um I think you're right, internal customers are very important. Um quite often. I think the finance person is just kind of in the corner and break glass in case of an emergency and and pull him out. I try not to be that person. I try to be the person that's uh willing to get out and speak and I think communication is critical. And the most important part of communication to me, and I learned this at Blue Cross as a call center manager is listening. When people come to you, people call you, people are emailing you, they're looking for your assistance. And if you're not listening, then you're going to miss the miss the target. So. I try to pride myself on listening to the needs and the concerns of whoever the customer is. And then providing a thoughtful response, not an immediate response, because that's not always warranted. Sometimes you need to take and reflect. Sometimes you need to get the data to support whatever the side or point of view is. Uh but I think that the communication has to be strong and that starts with listening and. I think um I I like to say that usually the the biggest uh solution to any problem is three feet away. It's the telephone. And if you pick up the phone and call the person that's having the problem and have a down a down to earth conversation. Uh typically, you can solve that problem. And if you need to get other people in the room and they're the right people, then you're going to solve that problem.
That's that's great. Um I have two other sort of related components to this. Question and the the other component to this is compliance with financial policies. One of the jobs of a finance director is clearly to work with departments and other town employees to comply with the town's policies. Uh sustain internal controls and so forth. Um what 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 are your some of your preferred strategies? Or what's the best way? That from your experience in making that happen?
Uh well, documentation is critical. You know, I think department policy uh can be, you know, departmental based. There might be some different policies based on different departments, but I think that uh what I've found is. This is the way we do it because this is always the way we've done it. Is one of those answers you get when you start asking some questions about the processing that happens day to day. Uh on people's desks or in people or in the departments. So. What I learned at the in the at Blue Cross Blue Shield, really initially many years ago. But reinvented that when I went to the planning department is having um documentation around fiscal policy. Very, very important. But then also communicating that and having a discussion uh with the shareholders, okay? Because it's it's not uh a one person show, right? There might be singular accountability at the end of the day. But there should be a collaborative effort to discuss, you know, what are the needs of the department? Um who should be processing? X, Y, Z. Um what is the threshold for somebody to approve um a payment to a vendor? Is there a threshold? What I typically like to see where I am is that anything under ten thousand dollars that my team is comfortable with. They usually have the green light to go forward. If they have questions, I ask them to come and see me. Let's discuss it. Uh anything over ten thousand dollars I need to see, uh whether that's a contract or an invoice. Uh and with some of the projects that we have going in Quincy, um quite a few of the invoices are in the seven figures. So there's no uh shortage of control and accountability that needs to happen there uh to protect the the taxpayer. That's really what it's all about.
Exactly. Thank you. Um my final component. Notice I picked the question with multiple components to it, so.
For that guy.
Um yeah. The uh the last question, the last piece of this is collaboration. Um are you a collaborator in 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 give an example uh of collaborating on a successful initiative with a with another department?
Sure. So um an easy one would be in the planning department where we had uh these this timeliness issue with. Spending the federal money before it could possibly be recaptured. Uh I collaborated very successfully with the DPW commissioner on roads and sidewalks and said, you know. Where are where are your shovel ready projects? Where can we go in and do our environmental review for the federal government? And where can we help support that project uh and use these funds and take the burden off of either bonded funds or the general fund? Similarly, with the director of natural resources, working with him to rebuild parks. Uh we built a couple of nice parks in some low to moderate income neighborhoods where. Uh the population density in in Quincy can be fairly tight in some of the neighborhoods. And there isn't a lot of green space around these apartment buildings or triple deckers. So the neighborhood park is really. The key to those children getting outside to play. And we built a skate park and uh myself and the uh. The commissioner of natural resources. And I got the idea at a conference in Burlington, Vermont. Where we were at Burlington, Vermont on Lake Champlain for um a HUD conference. And the they built a boathouse there to service the population to come down and enjoy the lake because not everybody can afford a boat. So this this boathouse was geared towards this vulnerable population. Off the second deck, so the lakes out front and off the deck to the left was a beautiful skate park. And I thought to myself, wow, that would be a fantastic attribute for the city of Quincy. And we had a skate park, but it was a nineteen eighty five version of a skate park. And it wasn't quite the the California feel to it. So we uh we collaborated and. Built that skate park using federal funds because it was in a low to moderate income neighborhood. It's jammed. I've never gotten out there and we'd have to have an ambulance nearby if I get out there, but. I've seen the kids out there on skateboards, on rollerblades, on on bicycles, and they're having a good time. And that's really what it's all about.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, my uh next question is thirty six parts. Wanted to be outdone by Mark Corst. You've touched on some of this, but I'll um give you the question as it was um prepared. Please describe your view of the role of the finance director in the municipal government organization, including your relationship to the chief administrative officer. Which in our case is our town administrator. Town departments and the elected leadership of the community, which is us.
Um someone described me when I took over at the planning department, the gentleman that had been there before me. Was there for forty years. He was he was an expert. Uh fantastic guy and helped share his insight with me, but he described it very simply. I like being a traffic cop. So you've got stuff coming at you. Some stuff you're going to let go by. Some stuff you're going to say stop. Sometimes you're going to look in the vehicle and see what's going on in here. Other times, you're just going to give it a quick look and say, all right, this looks okay. Go ahead, bye. So. That's a very simple explanation to that question. I think that the role for the the position internally is to um. Be a resource for department heads, for the chief administrative officer for this board. Uh but to be a resource also for other department heads, but also to be um. A bit of holding people accountable. So you know, you you have a budget for a reason. And if you're not, if you're trending towards going over your budget. We need to have a discussion about that and it needs to happen fairly quickly. And then we need to take the corrective measures to either. Make sure we're staying under budget or discuss why would we need to. Overspend on a project and you know, because cost overruns do happen, uh but it's not. The practice of the finance director to typically allow that type of cockblock spending. So. There's a little bit of collaboration with um with the uh shareholders. But then there will also be a little bit of uh holding folks accountable to make sure that we're all on the same page with what our our spend and our capacity is.
March your role with the town administrator. How would how would you perceive? Your role as finance director as it relates to him?
So uh for Bob, I think that I would be um. I would hope to be a valuable asset to him. I would hope to be someone that he can rely on for um accurate information. Uh someone that I can rely on for um trend analysis and uh you know, a thoughtful um. Insight into whatever the project or problem of the day is. Um also to be a little bit of a security guard as well to say, hey, you know, that sounds good and and that's all good, but let's, you know, give it the smell test. Does that look at okay? And if it looks okay, then great, let's move forward. If we need to vet that idea or that solution a little more. Then that would be the responsibility of the finance director to make sure the checks and balances are in place so that. We're following procurement law, that we're not spending uh where we shouldn't. We're not funding. With sources that really aren't appropriate for whatever the initiative is. So I think there's a little bit of uh good guy, bad guy there.
Do you think your role is with respect to this board? What what would it your role be as finance director with respect to the board?
I think with respect to the board, it would be about transparency of what's happening in the town financially. Uh to be able to come with prepared documentation, either at the request of the board or just through my own. Recognition or that of of Bob uh or of uh Mr. Scott and be able to. Express the finances in it in terms that people can understand. So obviously, the board's going to have some financial experience uh. With the way the town municipality works, but a lot of times, uh I had a great mentor at one time and he. Encouraged me to always use the mother test, pretend like your mom's in the room. And when you're explaining something, try to make it as simple as possible. So that the average person can understand what's happening. So. I think the type of communication and transparency would be critical uh to the board.
Thank you. Marcus.
This kind of expands on 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 Mike's uh question. Um first of all. Welcome. Sorry, I jumped right in at the beginning and didn't welcome you.
To the deep end of the pool. That's the way I go in. Into the deep end of the pool. That's the way I go in.
Thank you for coming today. Uh, how do you apply cost reduction strategies while maintaining organizational efficiency? And good services to finance customers, both internal to the organization and external constituents?
Yes, in a time of uh, just a time of tremendous inflation, I think controlling costs is critical. Uh, cost cutting, even just keeping it flat is is a is a bonus in these times. I think uh process improvements are are everywhere. And when I look at, I made a list of technology. That the town is already implemented and things like the uh paperless account payable and. Autumn automation and vendor self-service, uh auto filling notices. Um, electronic fund transfers to vendors. So these are all process improvements that have been implemented that are saving time. And resources and trying to get away from the paper. No, it's paper here, paper there, paper everywhere. Uh, that's what I found when I came into the city of Quincy. Uh, I think that any type of process improvement would need some buy-in. Uh, from what uh the key stakeholders are, but can looking at an opportunity for continuous improvement. Is something that I actually enjoy. And I think that's where you can look at reducing and maintaining costs and try to avoid. Uh, this unprecedented time of inflation that we're in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Goodness, like in Peter Q. Smith.
Uh, describe your experience in financial planning and revenue and expand your forecasting. And how would you approach a multi-year financial planning for the town of Yarmouth?
Good one. So right now I oversee a fifty five million dollar water and sewer utility that I have direct accountability for. And so every year we have to project, how much are we going to spend on our infrastructure for water and sewer? From there, we have to project how much water are we going to sell? And then from there, how much is that gonna cost the resident? And same thing on the sewer side. It's a it's a dicey uh, it's a dicey formula, I can tell you. Because we just had one of the wettest summers in history. And so my forecasting allows for some. Fluctuation in there. Uh, did I allow enough for the wettest uh summer in recent history? We're gonna find that out probably in around June. But uh, I think that. Projecting forward and looking for trends. So historical trends are very important. So you're having the data. I mentioned data a couple of times. Being able to have the data historically to look at what are the trends and then use that information. To make educated uh assumptions on what the future is gonna look like, but also build in some risk mitigation to that. Uh, which is what we've done with the water and sewer enterprise funds. Um, I also oversee the other parts of the DPW budget. Those are annual, year to year. However, we do have capital improvement plans and the way we break them down. Five year and ten year plans. The five year plan is typically based on things like vehicles, purchasing vehicles. Ten year plan is more about buildings and infrastructure related to municipal property. So I've looked at both of the plans that the town has. They look great. Um, you know, what we do um. In the city of Quincy, when we can, is we try to keep our high-end vehicles. So our street sweepers, our larger dump trucks, our. Larger, we use a lot of back trucks to clean out um storm drains because we're coastal community, keeping that from draining into the bay. Uh, and so we try to keep those vehicles under warranty. So we try to trade them in. Before they get into a point where they need massive financial investment for repair. So it's it's kind of one or the other. It's do you, do you keep and hold on to those vehicles for as long as you can drive it? Or are you looking to keep your vehicles current so that you can keep them number one online? There's a vac truck that's sitting in the shop waiting to be fixed and it could take two months to get that repaired. Is it helping you in the field when there's a massive storm coming in? So what we try to do is keep our critical vehicles current. And then look at where can we supplement with other uh replacement vehicles? So. That's just one example of forecasting out to the future. Uh, and I can see that the plans are in place already in the town. So. I would be interested in getting more involved with that and just understanding that a little better. Thank you.
Here goes selection, dear Hogan.
Can you just tell us a little bit about your experience uh with making public presentations of of financial materials and. In front of both small groups and large groups? Would you be comfortable presenting uh materials in front of a TV camera or. Large crowd, town meeting?
Thank you. Um, so I was too young to realize, but I was about twenty five years old and. I was at Blue Cross Blue Shield and I oversaw this liability recovery team, which was a thorn in all the hospital and. Uh, small doctor offices, chiropractor offices, because we would block payments to them or we would rescind payments for them. Because the members were injured due to somebody else's negligence. The thousands of providers across the Commonwealth would call and complain and be all fired up. So we came up with an idea that. Let's have a massive training program. So we did that in collaboration with some other departments. And we held it at the Heinz Convention Center back in probably nineteen ninety six. And um, I was backstage pretty much the whole time. Clapping my hands and pumping everybody up. And then when I went out through the curtain, there's about five thousand people in the stand in the seating. Behind convention center. And I said, well, the show must go on. So here I go, right up to the podium and off I went, starting with the presentation. And uh, I I laugh when I think about it because I don't know how I got through it, but I got through it. Um, I'm quite comfortable with the microphone. Um, I end, uh, I've been on TV a couple of times. I was on New England Cable News. For some community stuff in Quincy. I was on with Kevin Lemanowitz on Fox twenty five news when I was president of the Friends of Walston Beach. Spent ten years and running a nonprofit group for the beach preservation, conservation and ultimately events. Bring the community to the revitalized beach. The Commonwealth has spent about fifty million dollars rejuvenating. Wallaston Beach, but there's ten or twelve other beaches that are considered Boston Harbor beaches. So um, I've been on TV quite a few times. Um, I have a complete side gig that's completely volunteer where I just DJ kids events and and whatnot and uh. It's just kind of wild. Uh, the kids called me, one of the kids nicknamed me DJ Finance. So I run in a beach event. The DJ didn't show up. I had DJ equipment that was my father-in-law's. He realized after retiring, he didn't like the microphone. So it ended up in my garage. And I said, well, I have the solution with no DJ. Let me go get the equipment. And year after year after year, I'm on the sand DJing kids events. The last event I did, and I I kind of retired, I keep coming out of retirement with this, but um. My oldest son, so I have four children. I have one that's out of college in the workforce. She's an environmental scientist working in the GIS world. Then I have a son who's down in Florida at Lynn University Boca Raton playing soccer. And last year was his senior year in high school and they had nobody to DJ the big rivalry game in Quincy. Quincy High versus North Quincy, thousands of people come to these games.
That's a big one.
I'll DJ the game. And so I'm on the field with the DJ equipment. There's probably two thousand people in the stands and uh. My son ended up shining and scored the two goals to win the game, which was fantastic. Um, I'm not sure I handled it with all the grace that I could have, but. Uh, it was quite a moment. So, long story short, I'm I'm not afraid to get up in the public and and speak. You have to be prepared to do that. And I I kind of value the fact that I always am prepared before I speak, hopefully. You're welcome.
All right. Well, I have a prepared question here, but I can't wait any longer. Tell us the Yarmouth connection story.
Okay, so uh nineteen eighty four, not the book, the actual year. Uh, my parents, my parents were Irish immigrants. They came here in the early sixties. My mom was a nurse. She uh left the hills of Donegal and took a bus and a boat and a train for the first time to get over to Scotland to go to nursing school. My dad worked construction in Scotland because there were no jobs in Ireland. So they met there, fell in love. My dad moved to the United States. Uh, long story short, they ended up becoming um business owners. They owned a nursing home in Malden. So I really do have an affinity for the uh elderly population, for our seniors, for making sure they're taken care of because that's what I grew up with. Um, and so in nineteen eighty four, we'll say nineteen eighty four, they bought a house on Cutter Lane. And they spent a couple of years there and then uh bought a house over on Egg Harbor Road and the Acres of Pines Association. And so I spent many, many, many summers in Yarmouth. Uh, buzzing up and down Route twenty eight in a moped and getting down to what's now Skull Island, the old driving range that used to be there. I think there's still a driving range there now. That's where I taught myself how to swing golf clubs. Um, going to the beach. The Pancake Man is still here. I see uh Anne and friends, uh Captain Parker's Pub. Um, Giadino's Pizza. So I've been around Yarmouth quite a bit. Um, unfortunately, the family home was sold. My dad became ill, terminally ill and. My brother was aging uh with some old medical issues and they opted to sell the property, which was completely against what I wanted to do, but. Um, it wasn't my house. So they did what they needed to do and um, but I've still continued to come to Yarmouth for vacationing. Spent a lot of time at the Bayside Resort with my family, spent a lot of time at the Red Jacket Resort with my family. Um, and so it's just I, my favorite golf course is Bayberry Hills. What can I say? It's the last place I played golf with my dad. It was his favorite course. And uh, I haven't been out there in a long time, but I would love to get out there again. And this was back when it was eighteen. I think it's twenty seven holes now. And uh, I think I've only played the the new, the link style mine once or twice, but uh. The actual Bayberry Hills Golf Course is my.
Lot of money's been put into that course. It's been really dramatic.
That and some of the budget documents with the enterprise funds and the reinvestment in the golf courses because. It's a fantastic location. It really is centrally located in the Cape and um, you know, we were members because we were residents at the time and. Um, it was uh some great memories, some great memories, bittersweet at times, but great memories.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it?
Well, I was gonna.
Follow up, you're not gonna ask him if he remembers the Giadino's Market across the street from Giadino's? Do you remember that?
Yes.
Yeah, with the old man Giadino that used to run it. He was there all the time.
The store and I think there was a liquor store built in there too, I think.
Yeah, I used to go there all the time.
Yeah, they did. They had, they had a portion of it that was groceries and a portion of it.
Not there anymore, but Johnny Yeast is uh was.
You remember Johnny Yeast too, yeah?
Yeah.
Very good.
Doing good. Keep going. What else you remember down there?
All right, uh, I, you know, I have, oh, there's plenty of miniature golf places along the way.
Schools.
I do remember Rascals. I was too young to go there though. My sister would have been going there. Well, not me. My sister's just a little bit older than I am.
All right.
I won't say how much.
I'll give you a a little bit of a different question. You were selected for this position and you accepted it. Tell us about an area that you would need the most support in to be successful.
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, so I do have a master's degree in finance, although I've never been a director of finance for a town. Okay, so it's just straight up, I haven't been the lead pony in that. Uh, but I can say with confidence that there are plenty of tools and resources available. Either online or through the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, the DLS MMA. Uh, to leverage those resources to fill in any gaps that I may have in uh managing that part of. The business. Um, I'm very comfortable with the with the math, with the financial statements. Um, I just spent an hour in the car reading your Powers and Sullivan report. Powers and Sullivan is also the CPA for the city of Quincy. So I'm quite comfortable working with them. I've worked with them on several audits uh on the uh CIFA, CIFA audits. So um, I think that for me, just speaking honestly, that would be the one area where there's a little bit of a jump for me as far as. Job responsibilities. But I think with with Bob's experience and those agencies I mentioned. They, you know, they've done a great job too with the online tools. And if you just go out to the the DLS website, you're going to find. A whole host of videos and training tutorials that weren't available even five years ago. So I think that the resources are there. I think uh Bob would be a great resource. Members of this board could also be a great resource for that as well. So. I'm I'm eager to learn. Uh, I'm not gonna come in and pretend I have all the answers. Uh, but I would be eager to learn and collaborate where needed.
Thank you.
Okay, um, tell us about a time when you worked to create an exceptional customer service focus with other departments and or the public.
All right, so. We have a. We had, and it wasn't great, but I think we've made it better. Uh, we have a program that we use where we use a concierge service model with people in their water usage. So we monitor water usage for twenty five thousand endpoints to try to determine overuse. Overuse specifically for vulnerable populations like the elderly or the fixed income residents become a problem. And so what we've done is we use the new software that I mentioned uh that we implemented to run reporting on a daily basis. Continuous flow reports. And that'll help us determine whether there are leaks at uh the endpoints. And so something as simple as a running toilet can create hundreds of dollars of expense, maybe even thousands, depending on what's happening. And what we've had previously was um, you know, an elderly individual maybe has two bathrooms in their home. They may not go to that second bathroom. That might not be the one they use. If that toilet's been running for the entire billable period. It's a problem because they're gonna get a bill that might be ten times larger than their normal bill. So we are leveraging the software and the reporting to use a concierge model to reach out to those residents and say. Hey, just want you to know that you seem to be using quite a bit more water recently. Is there something going on? And sometimes it's, yeah, I filled my swimming pool. Or sometimes it's like, I just got a new irrigation system. And other times it's like, I don't know. So then we'll send one of our uh field technician teams from the water department out. And I asked them to just do a quick review of the property and we can find a running toilet. You can find, you know, a garden hose that's just left on, that nothing wastes water faster than a garden hose. Because there's no uh water conservation component to it at all. It's just, there's no faucet, there's no toilet to stop it. There's no, you know, handle or anything. Once it's on, it's going. So we've had residents that have. Put their um sprinkler system on their backyard and then left it on, then it rains for several days. They don't realize. And then all of a sudden. They've been running water for a week and they didn't know. So this is one way that I've tried to leverage the technology and and that type of model. To um, to help the community. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you.
How about your experience?
How about your experience with the formation of capital improvement program and capital budgets? Um, please describe your approach in interactions here and what 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 you may do to improve capital printing, planning processes.
All right, so. We'll talk a little bit about fleet management. So fleet management is critical to your CIP plan. So if you don't understand your vehicles, their age and the cost it is to maintain them, you're gonna go down a rabbit hole of expense that's gonna spiral out of control. Some communities, and there's vehicles in Quincy that are like this too, just because that's just the way it is. But if you're, you know, driving your vehicle into the ground, it may not be the best use of your funding. Maybe better off upgrading those vehicles. When I looked at the uh, at the uh, the CIP plan, obviously there's vehicles built in there. You can't buy them all in one year. You may not be able to buy all the vehicles you want over the five years. So you have to prioritize that. So I think understanding your fleet uh and what you have for vehicles and what their demand is and what their cost to maintain. Is an important component to that capital improvement planning and budgeting. Uh, when you're looking at larger projects, um, and I saw this in some of the documentation I was reading and. Uh, you know, you get a um. You get a quote or you get a an estimate on what you think it's gonna cost to build a seawall. But then you actually get out there and you realize that we're actually standing in the water, we're on along the water. There's gonna be construction delays, there's gonna be problems getting equipment out onto the site. Because it's soft. If it's too soft, you can't put the equipment out there. So those end up potentially turning into cost overruns. So you have to build some contingencies into your model. And I think that that is critical, especially in this time of inflation. And uh, when you're looking at a large project like your two hundred and seven million dollar wastewater plant. Uh, I think that looking at it from a capital project and capital budget, um, it's critical to have. And I'm I'm not sure of the interval yet, but very specific budgetary discussions around progress in the project. Versus expenditures. Because a project like that. Because a project like that could. Snowball. Very easily, and I think that. You have to be on top of that pretty much all the time.
Minute by minute.
It's a big one, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Can you just tell us about maybe, um, a significant failure that you've experienced over the course of your career? Um, how you handled it and possibly what you learned from it?
Okay, um. That's a good question, so, uh. I had an opportunity when I was at Blue Cross that was. Kind of an informal promotion, right, so the vice president that I reported into, so I was two steps down, had. Uh, I was the project manager for the division, but I was still had a department to manage as well and. She asked me to. Go into other departments. And. Kind of show them what I was doing or help manage their. Projects and. It didn't go well and I, I look back at it now and I, I know why. I know why it didn't go well, it wasn't introduced well to those departments, what I was trying to do. It wasn't, uh, communicated effectively from the top down, one piece of, that was part of it, but the other part of it is. I assumed that it was. So I assumed that these. You know, peers of mine understood that I was asked to come in there and, and do these things and just show them some of the cost containment, uh, measures and. Uh, reporting and day-to-day interact and. You know, how do you account for unplanned absences when you have a team of forty, but you're still gonna get ten thousand phone calls? If, if twenty percent of your team calls in sick and they're unplanned. How do you maintain business, so, um. The answer to that was cross-training, so there were other people that I cross-trained and their primary job wasn't to answer the phone, but once it did, they could. So trying to take that, those lessons that I learned and share them with these other departments. Uh, didn't go as well as I had. Thought it would. But I know why and I think it all had to do with communication. I try to be a much better. Communicator and, uh, I think I already said, I think the biggest part of communication is listening. Uh, and so I think I was going in there. You know. Hearing what they were saying, but maybe not listening and then probably should have suggested that we had a larger meeting to kick this off as a division. And not so much. Me kind of. Under the appearance of kind of going rogue, I guess you would say, that wasn't the case at all. Just kind of doing what I was told.
Thank you.
Mark.
Neil, why should we hire you as our next director of finance?
All right, so, uh, not quite the softball question that you gave me, uh, earlier, but, all right, so I, I'm a hardworking guy. I mentioned that my parents were immigrants and small business owners and, you know, from when I can remember. It was, you know, cut the grass, get out there and shovel, go around and empty out the trash bins and the patient's rooms. Uh, trim the hedges, just paint the closet, do all this other stuff and so I have a, a very strong work ethic. And I think that was instilled from my parents because that's all they knew when they came here, um. I have a love for the area, I'm quite familiar with the area. Uh, I think that, uh, I would be a good fit based on my familiarity with the area. As well as my experience with the infrastructure projects, the planning department stuff, uh, and also just, uh, my educational background as well, so. Um, am I an expert on all this? No. Do I have enough skill and experience and I, I think some talent that could be beneficial to the town, I do and, um. I would love to see Yarmouth taken into the next, uh, step of economic development because. The Route Twenty-Eight Corridor is such a famous stretch of road that, uh, you know, you have to, you have to do the sewer project to. Get the economic development in place and, you know, take the future, uh. Burden, financial burden off of the residents and shift it a little bit, so I think I can help with that.
Thank you.
Everybody all set? I, I have to, only because Mark Forrest raised this Yarmouth thing, you mentioned about being the DJ. Ever, I mean, do you play this modern music or do you ever go back to? Um, you know, Motown, some of that sweet soul music, maybe some Stones, some Beatles, I mean, what do you, what do you play?
So I have it all and I can tell you that my, uh, my father-in-law, his nickname of his little business that he started after he retired. He was, uh, he worked for the MBTA Communications and then worked for the city of Quincy's, um, nine-one-one call center as a, a manager there, so. When he retired from there, um, he, you know, wasn't ready to just sit around, so he called himself the dinosaur DJ. So he had all of it from. Tony Bennett and Frank Sinatra and, uh, all the Motown stuff, all the way through the rock and roll of the sixties and seventies. Um, I'm quite familiar with all that music. Today's music I pick and choose, uh, what I like to listen or play. A lot of it you can't play just because it has to be. You know. I, when I call my kids when they put something on the car, just cuz they can now play whatever music you want through the Bluetooth of a. Radio in a car and I say, is that daddy friendly? Because it better not, better be, that means it's, is it the radio version, is it the clean version? So if it's not daddy friendly, it's not allowed to be played, so there's a pretty wide range of tunes there, country has been my latest kick. Uh, I, I grew up with it and then I got away from it and now I'm kind of. Back on a little bit of a, my wife's not a big fan, but.
Hey.
Conversation for.
So now is your time, you can, like I said, you can summarize, um. Give us your final pitch or you can. And feel free, if you feel there was some key areas or qualifications that you have, we didn't ask you about. Feel free to talk about that as well.
Sure, I think, um, well, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here and, uh, I try not to sit up on the table, uh, too much and try to sit back and. Have a relaxed atmosphere and. Um, what I've learned over the years is I try to use a little bit of humor at work to keep it light. Uh, I mean, obviously there's times where you really need to grind it and get into it, but. I think you get the most out of people when you create an environment where they're comfortable and that they can do their job. So people are experts in their jobs, let them do their job, right? Um, and, you know, let them perform at a high level. If they're not performing at a high level, obviously you need to interject and say, what do you need to perform at a high level? Uh, and sometimes, you know, that's a varied response that you get, uh, but I've dealt with the good, the bad and the ugly there, so. Um, I'm just, I'm excited to be here. Um, I think protecting the residents, protecting the, the longtime business owners, protecting the new business owners and attracting. Future business owners, it's critical and then accommodating the tourists, which I'm sure. I don't have all the details, but are economic lifeblood to many of the businesses in the area. I think that tourism component has to be protected as well and. Um, really, I think this board did a fantastic job, I read all the wastewater stuff and, uh. Population growth in the area tremendous over time. The regional approach was. Probably a great idea up on paper on a board, but there's so many people and so many opinions involved. That I think this board did a great job in pulling that back and protecting the town of Yarmouth to move it forward. Uh, and I think I'd like to be part of that, so. I'm ready, willing and able.
Well, thank you very much, we really appreciate you, uh. Applying for the position and we really enjoyed the interview. And, um, you did a good job, thank you so much.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate it very much, have a wonderful evening. Everything you need to know about wastewater, I found it.
See that?
Yeah, Article eighteen, I love the last one, Yarmouth wastewater project is Mass DEP's number one ranked project for statewide funding. That made me smile. So that's good stuff. All right, yeah, I'm gonna, if you mind, if I shake hands with everybody and.
Please do.
You, you, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Pleasure. Thanks, Dan, for sure. We'll have to catch up a little quick sometime.
Yes, I would love to. And I guess that individual you mentioned, was it Dennis Harrington?
Oh, I know Dennis, yes, that him. Yeah, oh, yes. Thank you, thank you very much. Take care, have a great night, everyone.
Night.
Okay, one more.
You ready? We're ready.
Everybody all set?
Yep.
We're actually not that far off schedule.
Good evening.
Hmm.
How is everyone?
Everyone's well, thank you, how about you?
I'm doing great, thank you.
Okay, so, um, how would you like us to address you as Jennifer? Yes, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm Mike Stone, I'm the chairman of the board, um, to my right is Dorcas McGurran. And to her right is Peter Q. Smith, the Q's important, I don't know why, but that's, that's part of his baggage. And we have Dan Horgan and selectman Mark Forrest and of course. Our town administrator. You've met him, right, and then you've met Bill Scott, our assistant town administrator, you met our consultant. Yes, you've been interviewed with him. Um, so here's how we've done the other two interviews and we're gonna try to be as consistent as possible with yours as well. Um, we will ask a series of questions in rotation, I'll start first, then Dorcas. And Peter, then Dan, and then Mark. If, if. And this hasn't been the case, but if there's any, um, follow-up to, to that question in this. Any selectman can come in out of sequence and ask the follow-up question. We won't do an opening statement because the general questions that we'll be starting off with, I'm sure will cover all of that. But after we're done with our questions, we'll have some time that's. You can use however you wish, you can make a closing statement, um, you can talk about. Areas that we did, you don't feel we inquired into. Or skills that you have that didn't come to the surface during the interview, wha- whatever you want, it's your time, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
Good.
Okay, you're good, try to speak into the microphone.
Okay.
So we can hear you and, um. I will start. With, as I said, one of the. Very general questions that I'm sure. Will enable you to talk to us about. Your background. So here's the question, please provide us with an overview of your education and experience relative to this position. And what made you decide to apply? To be the finance director in Yarmouth? And what technical skills and certifications do you possess that will be valuable in your role as finance director?
Okay, thank you, um, yes, I have a degree in business from Emmanuel College, I graduated in two thousand, I went back to college at night while I was working. So, um, I have the, you know, the, um, Bachelor of Business in Business Administration. I was working for the town of Falmouth at the time and when I. Received my degree, I started to work for the, I went to go work for the town of Caveras, their first time town accountant. And I was there for almost three years and I moved over to Chatham to become the town accountant slash finance director. So while I was in Chatham. Um, I really grew into that position and worked under the town manager. And it wasn't just an accounting position, but it was more managing the assessing treasurer and collector's office and the accounting office as well. Um, we had a lot of, um. A- a- as you know wastewater was a big, is a big issue on Cape, so I worked, um, with the town manager to come up with a financing plan for the town of Chatham. I worked there for seven years, I've, and I'm sure my experience will come out with some of the questions that you asked during the interview. Um, I went to the town of Hanover for a couple of years and then the, um, finance director position opened in the town of Falmouth. And, um, I was the first full-time fin- well, I was the first finance director for the town of Falmouth, um, so it was really, there was a lot of getting processes. Up to speed and getting processes in place, really, um, hiring department heads as department heads were leaving. Um, and I worked there for ten years and left for the town of Cohasset, I've been there for a year, um, so it kind of brings me to. You know, why did I want to apply for the position of finance director for the town of Yarmouth, um? So I left Falmouth, I was there for ten years and I took a position in Cohasset, it was the town accountant finance director. The town of Cohasset was really coming, putting some long-range finance, financial plans in place. And it's, um, a pretty lengthy commute from Sandwich, but I had an agreement to work from home. For a couple of days a week, which I have been doing, they've been great. But the commute's just a little bit too much, it's the type of job, I've been there for a year, that I really need to be there, I need to be there more than be working from home. Uh, doing the accounting, but I've done some, you know. Great things since I've been in Cohasset, put some processes in place, but when, um, I saw Yarmouth opened up and I had been there for a year, so I really. Felt that I could use my experience, particularly in Chatham and Falmouth, as finance director for the town of Yarmouth with. The Cape issues that we've dealt with in the past. Um, I have a certification, I am a certified governmental accountant. My experience is that I know it from the ground up. But I also can talk about finances and put financial plans in place and budgets in place. You know, from a big picture perspective, not just. You know, working technically. Um, and so I have my procurement, my certified governmental accountant, I've done a lot of, um, project. Management with the procurement and had, you know, major. Projects, um, working through that procurement process. And so that's really, you know, I feel like I can take my experience, um, I have several years of experience, financial experience, a lot of it. That we can get into as we go through the questions, but I really feel like it would be benefited for the town of Yarmouth with my background.
Thank you. We'll go to, um, selectman Dorcas McGurran.
Uh, well, in your resume, you talk about bond rating and so this question is. Do you have experience in working with municipal bond rating agencies to manage the bond, bond rating process? And the town presently has a standard and porous bond rating of double A plus. And we are very anxious to reach triple A status, how would you approach fulfilling the goal of raising the town's bond rating?
Okay, um, great question, when I was in Chatham, when I first started in Chatham, they were a double A. And through our fiscal policies and great teamwork, we were able to bring it to a double A plus and then a triple A. And when I was in Falmouth, um, and let me just back up in Chatham, you know, we have a good relationship with the bond rating agencies. Back then, we actually brought them out to the town and we would give them a tour of the town and all the projects that we were, you know, working on and completing. And talk about our finances and so really to be able to give, um, we use standard and porous to give them a really, you know, good feel of the community. And so we received a couple of upgrades while I was in Chatham and then, um, it seems to be, I think, probably in the last ten years, they really don't come out to the communities like they used to. So it's a lot more of the conference calls, um, but I do have a great relationship with our, um, financial advisors, we use Hilltop. And also with the bond rating agencies, I've sat in on several calls with bond rating agencies. Um, and in my experience, in order to get an upgrade is really what they like to look at, is they like to look at strong financial policies. That you adhere to, keeping, they are very interested in how they, you know, you keep the board informed and committees informed as well. Um, strong reserves and having a reserve policy and making sure that you're putting money into your reserves. And then there's other factors that just are out of your control. I know one of the factors that we had in Chatham was we didn't have the access to Boston when they looked at that part of the bond rating. And then at one point, I think they may change their decision on that, we received the access to Boston and, and that kind of changed with it as well. So demographics play into it, but from a financial standpoint, it's just really, um, in, in budget management. Um, when they rate the four different areas of, of. Bond, you know, when they rate your bonds in four different areas, one of them is budget management and I've always been very, very strong in budget management, I manage the bottom line. Making sure that, um, and it starts with communications with department heads, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, don't. You know, if you have some money left over in your budget, you don't have to spend it all, we're not gonna take it away from you. Um, so through communication, strong policies and strong budget management, um, they do like to see that as well, and so that's another. You know, another issue that you'd be looking at if you're looking for a, a bond rating upgrade.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Peter.
Jennifer, thank, thank you for, thank you for coming down, thank you for applying for the job. You've actually hit on this a little bit, so I'm gonna e- expand on it, says, do you have experience in infrastructure financing and coordinating? Financing of a major capital project, uh, as you know, the town of Yarmouth has a two-hundred-and-seven million dollar phase one of an eight-phase wastewater plan. With, with the financing plan only fully developed for phase one, how would you approach the oversight? With, with the financing plan only fully developed for Phase One, how would you approach the oversight of major expenditures in Phase One while providing leadership and financial planning for the next seven phases?
Well, I did read your financial plan on the website, and it's very comprehensive. And you have a great plan in place of addressing the wastewater issue in Yarmouth in the financing portion of it as well. So the way that I approach it, it's great to have a plan, but you have to implement that plan, and you have to, you know, and you take it in pieces and in plans change, so you have to be able to be flexible to adjust to that plan. So my experience in wastewater planning, when I was in Chatham, we came up with the financing of the first phase of of the wastewater in Chatham, that was building the wastewater treatment plant and putting down the backbone down, down the main street. Worked with the civil engineers on procurement, was involved in all of the meetings, and, and got that project kicked off. In Chatham, they actually, we had presented several different, different options for people, you know, betterments and things of that nature, but they ultimately, when I was there, decided to put it all on the tax rate. So we had presented that with them, and they moved forward that wastewater management, that part of the wastewater management plan. And so since I was in Falmouth, we've embarked on a major wastewater. I've been involved in several projects, and let me back up. It's not just wastewater. When I was in Chatham, we had what was called a project oversight group, and it was the town manager, myself, the planner, and the building commissioner, and we would meet every Monday and Friday, and we would review all the projects in town. And we had 35 at, at, you know, at some point, it was, you know, renovation of the fish pier, or looking at the roads, you know, down Main Street, or even painting the sidewalks. And so what we were able to do is we would bring in, you know, who was managing that project at the time, you know, if it was DPW, or do we bring, you know, an outside engineer? And we'd be able to move through those projects very, very quickly and be able to answer those questions and make the decisions, if you will, having everybody at the table. So we managed a lot of projects, and that's where I gained a lot of my experience for project management and infrastructure planning and, you know, financing of that. When I went to Falmouth, they had, they implemented the Little Pond Sewer. And it was probably, I don't know, at the time, it must have been estimated at like $60 or $70 million, and it was putting the source, they already have sewer, and they have a sewer, a wastewater plant. So they were laying the sewer, and so I was involved in putting the financing together and putting processes in place. We have a, in Falmouth, we have a financing plan of, we have excluded debt, and we pay a certain amount of excluded debt every year, and it's about 10 million. So we always want to make sure we don't pay more than that. So I put the plan together on how are we going to finance the sewer and try to stay within that 10 million. So we were on the intended use plan for the Clean Water Trust. We received 0% financing, but we also had betterments. So a big part of implementing that project is trying to issue the bonds in notes, so we weren't spiking the tax rate. And when you're working with the trust, they really dictate to you when you start to have to pay back principal and interest. And actually, you address the timing issue of your wastewater management plan in, in the document that I read online. So you do address the timing. So the way I see Yarmouth in embarking on this, it would be a lot of really looking at the timing and planning and making sure that, okay, we're on this phase right now, how much do we have set aside? Because I know you're setting aside funds. How much do we have to borrow? It seems like if we're borrowing something, it would be within the levy, so you want to make sure that you're managing your levy. And it's, you know, taking it piece by piece. The other projects that I've completed while I was in Falmouth, I was on the committee to build the new senior center. It came in time on budget. The waste, we had a 50 million, $48 million water treatment plant. I was involved with that as well. And when I left Falmouth, we were in the process of building a fire station on Hatchville Road, and I was involved in that. Headed the procurement on that, the RFQ picked the, we had the team together that would pick the engineer and the architects and, and put all that project, and put the project together. Meanwhile, I would put the financing together. I, my, one of my strengths is issuing debt, so I don't borrow unless I need it, unless we need it for cash flow. And you want to make sure that you're not borrowing too much, and you want to look at interest rates. You work with your financial advisors, and also working with DEP and the trust to make sure when you get into the construction of your wastewater, that you're making sure that the money's coming in quickly as you're getting your, you know, the invoices for the construction. They come in, you want to make sure you get that money in and pay that out within a certain amount of time that's in the contract. So there is a lot involved with managing a project for infrastructure.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question to that.
Sure.
So it, it's a big project to manage, obviously. What personnel within the town would you expect you would be working closely with, if anyone, on the management of the wastewater project?
Well, I'd be working with, closely with the town manager and under his direction. You know, sitting in as many meetings as I'm asked to and being involved as much as you want me to be involved. I can sit in a lot, on a lot of those meetings, particularly with the financing. When we're, when I'm looking at a project that needs to have borrowing or using existing funds, I do work very closely with the department head. So I would assume at this point it would be the DPW director to really have the communication on the timing. We have engineering. The other thing too is usually engineering isn't paid for by the Clean Water Trust. Usually you have to borrow or pay for that on your own. So you always want to make sure, you know, what's your timing of the engineering as well. So the communication between the town administrator, the DPW director, and whoever else, whatever project it may be, you know, talking with them. If I'm needed for procurement, I would sit in on, on those meetings as well. You know, working with architects. Another part of a project is making sure that if you have a project manager, if it meets the threshold under procurement, that you need to hire a project manager. You really need to manage the project manager and make sure that you're getting the reports of budget to actual, what we're spending, you know, as they manage the project. So it's like overseeing that too, and making sure, you know, everybody's talking to each other.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go to selectman Dan Horgan.
Hi Jennifer.
Hi.
I'm Danny, and thank you again. I, like everyone else, we're really appreciative of you coming down and putting yourself forward for this position.
Thank you.
This is a bit of a multi-part question, but yeah, tell us a little bit about your familiarity with the technology and financial systems, including Munis, if you have any. And share with us a time when you've used the technology to improve your performance in financial transactions or tracking analysis? And are you capable of managing a comprehensive general ledger and financial suite of software to gain the maximum for our town?
Well, I believe, yes, I, I, I can and have. So I used Munis a number of years ago, but it was an older version of Munis when I was working for the town of Falmouth. I've used Data National, Softwrite, Vadar, a lot of the financial suites that are out there. I've been through probably three conversions. And being a certified town accountant, also, I know it from the ground up. So you know, when you go through a conversion, you want to make sure your chart's really strong, because everything starts with your chart of accounts. That links into everything. So I do believe I'd be capable of looking at all the different software. Now, software obviously has changed over the years. There's a lot more cloud-based software that have been used. I'm not, I know that you use Munis here. I know the fundamentals of accounting, so the new Munis, I'm sure I could pick up pretty quickly. I'm not even concerned about that. But there's so many different software out there. I'm not sure what software you use, but I've been able to pick that up pretty quickly, manage through that. As you know, one system talks to another, and let me think of an example where I've used technology to actually improve the performance. I think really, the way I can say from the accounting end of it, is making sure a lot of everything is automated in your financial management system. So take, for example, when you start really digging into the details, sometimes you find that you think you're using the software to the maximum that you could use it, but then you find out that maybe this person, well, I kind of keep this on a spreadsheet. I really don't put this over here. So I've been, I was able to, I remember in Falmouth, we went, we switched softwares. We went to Softwrite, and we had a cloud-based version and, and it was like a hybrid type thing going on. And so I made sure that with, in the treasurer's office, that all the accounts were actually logged into the software, and that we balanced the bank statements on the software, which is very difficult to do, and it's very time-consuming, because over the years, we take a lot of credit cards. And so when you're balancing a bank statement with credit cards can get very tedious, so you need to make sure you have the processes in place. So I think using that software to that advantage was extremely helpful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark.
Thank you. Hi Jennifer.
Hi.
As you know, a great deal of what goes on in a finance director position or in the office involves providing services to the other departments, and and what services do you think are the most critical and the most important in terms of supporting the work of other departments?
Well, a lot. I will tell you, it starts it really starts in the accounting office. I've always worked with the town accountants that I've worked with, and I was a town accountant myself, and I am right now, actually, and I've been in the past. And I think it's really important to work with department heads and staff and be a resource for them, because we're, you know, keeping track of the books, you know, and the invoices, and we're, you know, we're paying the invoices, and what account, where's our money? And not everybody is astute to reading their budgets or looking where the money is. So I think it's really important that we work closely with everybody and make people feel that they can come to us, because I think sometimes people get, get afraid of that. And so they want to be, so we want to be approachable, so that, you know, if a department head has a question about their budget, that they can, you know, walk into my office, they can walk into the accounting office, and they can say, hey, you know, I have a question about this, can you help me with this? And it's not just doing it for them, but it's teaching them how to do it. And, and I think that's a real strength of mine is training, because I always like to tell people, not, this is what you need to do. This is why you're doing it. So think about it, you know, it starts at town meeting, they vote it, it's in the warrant booklet, see, it's right there. This is how we log it into Munis, and this is your report. And so I think it's really a lot of communication and just being welcoming to, to the, to the people in town. And also from, you know, it doesn't, it's not just internal customer service, it's external customer service. And so a lot of the departments that I've worked with in the past, they've been excellent at customer service with the taxpayers of the town. You know, we have people that, you know, even though you can pay a lot online, people still like to come into town hall to pay their bills, and they want to see people. And so we like, and they can get angry, especially with their taxes. So we like to, you know, do customer service training, and you know, take it from here down to here and really walk them through. Because, you know, we do have master general law that we have to adhere to, but we want to be able to communicate that to people in a nice, friendly way.
Thank you. I just have a quick follow-up, and that is another important part of the deal with getting departments really to comply with the town's policies and internal controls. And so when you're looking at the job, what would you consider to be the unappropriate strategy or game point in terms of getting that kind of collaboration, that kind of cooperation?
So I guess I would assess the situation. Is it an overall policy that people don't really adhere to? And, and a lot of people do that, you know, if, you know, if I look at and I see there's, you know, a few department heads. What I've done in the past is I've done workshops. So I'll do a workshop and say, okay, this is, you know, purchase orders. We're implementing this purchase order policy. So we want to, this is what the threshold is, this is what the process is going to be, and this is why we're doing it. And then, you know, you, everybody, sometimes, you know, a lot of departments might adhere to the process or the policy, and there might be one or two that don't. So what I try to do is, you know, talk to them one-on-one. You know, I'll reach out and say, all right, this is why we need to do it this way, you know, it, it just, you know, it's better record-keeping, or it's just better overall, it's better communication, or if you're dealing, you know, especially if you're dealing with committees, right, finance committee or a capital budget committee. You know, we need to adhere to it this way, because when we transmit this information to the committees, it's much more, it goes much more smoothly. So a lot of it is, is that communication.
Are you a collaborator?
Yes.
Can you give an example of where your collaborative, collaborative skills with others has led to some successful outcomes?
This, may I answer it kind of indirectly? I do like to have department meetings and bring everybody in. And, you know, because a lot of times, the assessor and the treasurer, they're talking, but we're not talking about the big picture, right? So I like to do that and collaborate with, you know, the other finance department. I do have have workshops, like I said, at times. I've done that. And I also, kind of indirectly, I like to talk to the people in my department, and I, and I'll say, what do you like to do, or what don't you like to do? Like, where do you see yourself? You know, because I think that's really important to have employees that are happy, and they like what they're doing, they feel like that, you know, you're supporting their goals. You know, this is where I want to be in five years. Well, I want to support that. And so I'm collaborating with them in that way. You know, so I think there's all different types of collaboration.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Describe your experience and involvement in the annual budget process, including the size of budgets you've worked on, and how would you approach the management of the budget process and the interaction with the town administrator, staff, finance committee, and others? What do you find challenging about the budget process, and how can you best add value to our local budget process? I know that's loaded, so take your time and answer in whatever order you wish.
Sure, and if I miss something, feel free to follow up and I'll go down that road. So the biggest budget I've managed was the town of Falmouth, 150 million. And so we started the budget process. We'd have a budget policy that went to the select board. I would draft it, and they would either change it or adopt it, and this would be. So we start with the budget policy. And then I would give out a directive with the town manager. We would put a memo out and ask people to put their budgets together within the policy of the select board. And then keep in mind, obviously, the strategic plan of the select board if they're asking for increases. So it all starts with that. And then, you know, we, we get it out to department heads, and then they would, you know, submit their budgets. We'd usually give them like four to five weeks, and they would submit their budgets. I would, meanwhile, when they're submitting their budgets, I'm looking at revenue estimates. I'm looking at the levy. I'm looking at, I, you know, things that I know that have to be put into the budget before they even tell me that this is what they want in the budget. So I already have a framework of the budget when I sit with department heads, or when we sit with department heads to go over the budget meetings, you know, to have budget meetings, and that would be the next step. So I would sit with department heads, and we would talk about their budget. I think my strength in the budget process is I know municipal government very well. I've been doing this a long time, and I understand how the departments work. So I know the questions to ask in order to draw out what I need to draw out from them when they're asking for something, you know. I, if they're asking for a new position, or they need an increase here or an increase there, I know, I know the questions to ask. When I meet with department heads on their budget, I'm pretty upfront at the time. If they're asking for something, I can tell them, I'm not going to recommend it, you know. And, and you know, and the budget process that I've been used to doing is going to be different in, in Yarmouth, and I do know that. So I'm just telling you how I worked it and what worked for us. When I was in Falmouth, the town manager and myself would sit with department heads, but I would make recommendations to the town manager through those discussions. I think, you know, for, this is you know, what I think every department should get, and this is why, but this is the overall picture. We really need to, to put some money over here, or this contract's up, and we have to make sure that we fund that contract that's increasing by whatever. So I would, so I'd have a framework, I would meet with department heads, and then I would assemble the budget. And a lot of times, I would, you know, I always like to see what the recommendations are, because you're always going to be over budget, right? So if you have, if I have, if I put in all the rec, not the recommendations, but all the requests, they're going to far exceed what we have. And so then, then there's, you know, I'll take one they're going to far exceed what we have. And so then, then there's, you know, I'll take one, two or three, you know, shots at the budget to try to get it in balance to make a recommendation. And then there are times when I will, you know, call department heads up and say, okay, I know you're looking for this. Um, or I know you've had this vacant, I'm just giving you examples. I know you've had this vacant position for a couple of years. Um, but it, it doesn't seem like you want to fill it. So we might want to move money over here, but let's, you know, let's talk about that. Another important component of putting the budget together is really trying to figure out what is a money issue? And what is the management issue? Because a lot of times people want to put money towards management issues. And so it's trying to figure that part out too and say, wait a minute, this is a management issue over here. This is not a money issue. So let's talk about what we can do. I've been able to solve a lot of problems through budget meetings. People, um, department heads will say, well, I really need this and, you know, it's not my budget. And I'm like, well, I have, I used to have a fund or a, a separate warrant article for business equipment. And so I saw, we have some business equipment and they needed something for like a short amount of money, you know, so we can do that. So it's a good time to connect with department heads too on their needs. And you can solve some problems right then and there that, that don't need to go any further. So once all that's put together and the town manager, you make recommendations, work with the town manager and we're like, yep, this budget's good. And I think here you'd probably bring it to the select board and then it would go to the finance committee. Um, that's what we did in Falmouth, went to the select board and then they would, they would get budget books. I also assembled a budget book and it had a lot of narratives in it. So anybody could pick up the budget book and read the narratives and understand where the revenues, the expenses, what debt is, what are the terms and it had a lot of information and we would put out the budget books. The budget was due January first. So we always made sure that the selectmen would have the budget books probably right before Christmas, before we took some time off. And then, um, and then you'd have a week or two to kind of look at it. And then we'd do a big budget presentation in January. And then what we would do, because it was public information, we'd give the budget to the finance committee the night we gave it to the board. Because we always wanted to make sure the board got it first. So it, so that's another part is making sure the timeframe of everything that's laid out. You don't want to, you know, you don't want to give the budget the financial review because the board is like, that's not good. So.
And thank you, um, Darkus.
How do you apply cost reduction strategies while maintaining organizational efficiency? And good services to finances customers, both internal to the organization and external constituents?
Um, it's a, a good question. So in the budget, I'm always looking for efficiencies. Um, and I've been able to do that within the finance department in Falmouth, um, particularly with personnel. So we'd be able to, um, you know, the accounting office had two full-time people and a town accountant, but it seemed like at the time, they only really needed two and a half, maybe not three. And so when somebody would leave, I'd talk, you know, to the town accountant, which we did, and we were able to make that part-time and still be able to get all the work done and provide the service that we need to everybody. So I'm always looking at efficiencies within the accounting department. How can we do things better? What's a cost saving to the budget? So I look at it that way. And I look at it that way also with the, you know, IT, um, efficiencies within technology with people paying online and things of that nature. So when the, you know, basically the treasurer collector's office and with the constituents, you know, coming in to pay their tax bills, trying to find efficiencies there, what makes it easier for them? Did I, am I hitting on what you're asking for? I just want to make sure it was. So that's really, I, I look at that a lot. And then because the budget process, I look at it in other departments too. And so I might make suggestions or talk to the town administrator about, you know, I think, you know, this person left because your biggest cost of personnel and your fixed costs. So it's salaries, it's health insurance, it's pension. So if you can really, when somebody leaves or if you've had, you know, some people, you know, some employees leaving, if you can reorganize in a way that saves you money, that's where a lot of times you're going to get efficiency and a cost savings. But making sure that, you know, we can still provide the service to the community that people are used to or even increase the service to the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Jennifer, you, you kind of hit on some of these things. I'm going to read the question as it's written here. Please describe your experience in financial planning and revenue and expenditure forecasting. And how would you approach a multi-year finance planning for the town of Yarmouth?
Okay. Um, so I have a lot of experience in financial planning. Um, you know, starting in Chatham, we would plan out thirty, forty years. That's one of the, one of the things that we did that the bond rating agencies loved, right? They want to see, yeah, we're looking forward thirty or forty years. So I would project debt out, particularly with, um, you know, projects that we were looking at in debt. Um, I'd go out long-term on that. And then we would look at the capital plan, you know, and in part of that, we would, one of the things I tend to do, um, in, in other communities and it's worked fairly well, but it really depends on your policies, is kind of segment, okay, these are the projects that might incur debt. These are the projects that are free cash. These are the projects. And I noticed in your capital plan, you do do that. You actually break it down by funding sources, which is great. You know, CPA, this is CPA. And then I would project those out, you know, is that borrowing? Um, free cash, you want to make sure, you know, um, free cash can always change every, from year to year, but so you always want to use a conservative amount of free cash. So I would project that out. Um, maybe, you know, five or 10 years for, for cash purposes. Borrowing would go out forty years. Um, when I've put um, revenue and expense projections together, I've projected out five years. But I will tell you that things can change so quickly. Um, and it's good to have it on paper. So sometimes I might focus on three years. So I kind of know what's going to happen in, in the five years, but really let's focus on three. Um, because you can get a much better, um, projection, you know, with your operating budget that way. Um, I, you know, and I think COVID is just such a great example, right? So when we put projections together, we use the best information that we have at the time. We talk to people and like, we think that might happen. We talk to DUI, talk to other finance directors. What are you seeing in your community? Collaborating with a lot of other communities just to see, is there something I'm missing or I'm thinking about it this way? What do you think? And I remember with COVID, you know, we put, we went to, um, town meeting in June to um, pass the budget. But we all thought that, you know, we weren't going to get revenue for meals tax, hotel motel, people just weren't going to come down here, right? And so we were super conservative. And then what happened was they still did and our free cash went up like a lot. So I say that because, you know, we want to use the best information we have. We always want to kind of be conservative because you don't want to get into trouble. Um, but you need to build in enough, enough flexibility in order to kind of ebb and flow and change with the times, if you will. So I have a lot of experience with financial planning in different, you know, capital operating and, and all that.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
I think this is probably fairly clear at this point, but if you can, can you tell us a little bit about your experience with making public presentations on financial materials in front of small groups and larger groups? Um, are you comfortable in that role? Uh, are you comfortable in front of the TV? Are you comfortable in front of town meeting?
More comfortable than I have been here tonight. I was nervous about this. Um, yes, I have presented a, a lot. And, and really it started in Chatham where they real, so the town manager in Chatham would say, okay, you're presenting tonight, you're presenting tonight. And I was a little uncomfortable with it, but the more you do it and when you really know what you're presenting, you get much more comfortable with it over time and that's what happened. So yes, I am comfortable being on TV and I'm comfortable presenting. Um, when I worked for, so I've always presented to boards and committees. In Falmouth, we had a fifteen-member finance committee that I would present to. And then when we presented the budget, I would present the budget to the select board and the department heads would be there. And then I would present the budget to town meeting and we had two hundred and forty members. So I worked very closely with the finance committee. Um, working through, you know, the, the budget and the capital plan. So when we got to town meeting, I was able to answer a lot of the questions and things of that nature. Um, I've given presentations to bond rating agencies when they actually come down. Um, PowerPoint presentations. So yes, um, I've done a lot of that. And com, and I am comfortable with it. When I, you know, because you need to, when you, when you know the subject matter. And if I don't know it and I have a question at a presentation, I'll be the first to tell you, I don't know it, but I'll get you that answer.
Great, thank you, Mark.
Um, this is a twist on a question that I've asked before with the other candidates. Why do you want to become the finance director for the town of Yarmouth and why should we hire you?
Okay. Um, I want to become the finance director for the town of Yarmouth because first of all, I, I love the Cape, right? So I've got off Cape and I've realized, you know what? I really like the Cape. I know the Cape and I think, how can I put this? We like to do things when we know we're good at them, right? And I am really good with Cape Cod and Cape issues. I feel comfortable. I feel like I have a lot to offer and that makes me excited, you know? Um, going into a place that I know very, very well. I feel that I can add value to that and look at areas where I can add value. Um, I'm familiar with the town of Yarmouth. I know people that work here just from being a municipal government. I would be excited to work with people that I've worked with in the past. Um, and, you know, it's a lot of tourism here. So I think Yarmouth is just a great town. And so I would, I would love to be able to take my experience and I want to learn too and I want to grow. And I think Yarmouth has done a really good job over the last, um, I would say 10 years. You know, with your wastewater planning, um, um, it's just impressive what you have on the website, your financial policies and the way that you've set up, you know, um, personnel and things of that nature. So that, you know, that makes me excited. Um, so that's why I want to work for Yarmouth. Um, I think it would be, um, I think it would be great. Um, why should you hire me? Because I, I, I have a lot to offer. And I think that I could add value and I think that I can help you with your wastewater project. I know a lot, I know I've, I have a lot of experience. I'm very familiar with borrowing, what you need to borrow. I'm very familiar with mass general law, what you can and what you can't do. And so I think, um, by hiring me, um, I think you'd be happy with it.
Thank you.
Here's my question. If you're hired for this position, tell us about an area that you would need the most successful.
Probably, all right. So I read through your charter. So I, I understand the process here and the committees and all that, but I probably just need the su, support of, you know, when you, when you go into a new job, it takes a while to kind of figure out the lay of the land, if you will, right? It's like, you know, we can read the charter and I can read your bylaws and I can read your policies and this is what it's supposed, this is, this is how we operate. But sometimes it's not always operated that, you know, there's, there's things that you do that I don't know about. And I think that's what I would need support. So I'd kind of want to sit back and learn a little bit. Um, and, and be supported in, in the way of, okay, this is what, this is how we've done it and you know, a little guidance there. It's probably not the best answer to the question. I think I probably-
Okay, I'll keep asking until I-
Yeah. And I probably, I need support, maybe a little bit, um, getting familiar with Munis again. You know, really looking at that, looking at your, um, your reporting and, um, and how that's, you know, you know, getting reports of, you know, your fund balances and your enterprise funds and things like that. I'd probably definitely need support of in the beginning of, of getting all that information.
Okay. Um, given your strong skill set, which of your skills do you think you have to work on the most to get where you want it to be?
I would probably have to work on, um, all right, what my, I, I kind of look at, right, my weakness and I have a lot of them. Because we all do. Um, I think what I would need to do is be more interactive with department heads in going out into the field and looking at projects. I think that really gives you, I've done it before and when I do that and I actually make the time to go out there and look at, okay, this is where we're looking at building this, you know, even though I'm doing, um, I'm getting involved in the project from a finance perspective, I still, when I have a visual, it's, it's, it's so much more informational and gives me, um, a better picture of, a better understanding of the overall picture when we're looking at financing and how we're, you know, and procurement and what we're actually trying to do. Or do we want to maybe do it a different way? So it's really probably working probably closer with department heads in that aspect and maybe getting out a little bit more, not just always, you know, being in the office and trying to run the numbers.
Might that also involve communication with the department heads?
Absolutely.
Both verbal and, and written?
Yes, yes. In verbal and written, I'm more of a verbal, you know, one-on-one. Sometimes I'll just like pop down the hall if they're available. Um, I do, you know, write by email a lot, but I'm not solely email. I'm much more interactive. Like I will, if I have a question and I know somebody's sitting in their office, I'm more apt to just pick up the phone and ask them the question and have a short conversation with them. But then again, and it's understanding how they work, right? So that's how I work, but not everybody might work like that. So I work in a town right now where some people prefer, they don't want to talk, they just want emails. So you kind of try to figure that out as you go along to, so everybody's comfortable.
All right, Darkus.
Tell us about a time when you worked to create an exceptional customer service focus with other departments and/or the public.
Okay. So with the treasurer collector's office, um, we've done customer service training. Um, I've worked closely with them and they've worked with the public. You know, through software and things of that nature, using the website. Um, I guess an example would be, um, in Falmouth, beach stickers. So everybody, so the line would be down the hall and around the corner for beach stickers. And it always seems to happen on like one or two Fridays. So what we decided to do is try to take the, in, there was no parking, right? So, and everybody was down there and they wanted their beach sticker. So we, um, came up with a solution of putting it in, at another site for like a couple of months until they would start selling beach stickers down at Surf Drive Beach where they normally put beach stickers out. So that would be one, um, thing that we, that was one issue that we dealt with. And so that worked out very, very well because the rec center had a big parking lot. People could go in and there was a, um, we, and there was a building next to it. We, we put it out there a couple of times. Um, and people would be able to go and get their beach sticker and then, and then go to the beach. And you didn't have these long lines waiting. So that would be one thing with customer service that I, I did. And what was the other, was there was another question to that I was trying to?
Well, internally and externally.
Okay. So that would be the external, okay? Internal, um, is really having, you know, discussions and talking with the finance team about, um, and I've had to do it over the years, um, particularly, I know you have a regional school district and I think this is probably, but one of the, the best examples is, um, when you have a town and a school, it, you know, they have their own administration, they have their own finance department, we have our own finance department. So it's really about trying to bring everybody together and try to remind them that, you know, we're one team, you know, even though you're working for the school, you know, we're one team, we- You know, even though you're working for the school, you know, we're one team, we have the same goal. Let's try to all kind of get along. And yet I've kind of run into that, like every community I've worked with, with the school department. So I've had meetings, I've brought people in, like, I, I'm very comfortable bringing in the school business manager and the town accountant and whoever else needs to be there and say, okay, we have, this is obviously an issue, let's talk about it and see how we can resolve it. And then it creates better customer service internally, particularly for the schools. Because the schools have different goals than the town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Peter.
How about your experiments with the formation of capital improvement programs and capital budgets? Please describe your approach and interactions here as well as what you may do to improve capital planning process.
Okay, um, my experience with the capital improvement process. Um, so I've worked with, I've really, we had, and when I worked in Falmouth, I've, we had a capital budget committee in the beginning, but we were really looking, and I worked with the committee. We were really looking at putting a capital budget together and looking at, you know, how much do we really need every year to fund the capital plan? It was on a much smaller scale than what we have now. Um, in order to form, you know, putting the capital budget together. Can you repeat the question again? I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought.
How about your experience with the formation of capital improvement program and capital budget? That's A. And then B, please describe your approach in interactions here as well as what you may do to improve capital planning processes.
Okay, thank you. Um. So the capital budget process, um, how I handled it in Falmouth, I'm not involved in it in Cohasset. Um, but I, um, was involved with it in Falmouth. And so we kind of handled it the same way we did the operating budget. We would put out a memo, let's look at your capital plan. We had a 10-year capital plan. And people would submit their requests every year, but what I find is that their requests are for this year isn't what was on the last year's capital plan. You know, everybody always have, has these emergencies. Well, I didn't know I needed this skater equipment for wastewater, you know, I, 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 you know, something to that effect. So it's really weeding through what is needed and prioritizing, um, you know, the capital within, within that budget. And what I would do, the other thing that I would do is I would go out on site to the different departments and I would look at their, what they were asking for, for capital. So if they needed new vehicles or a front end loader or whatever, a mower, um, I would go and look at it and, and, and look at the equipment. When, if it was a need and where it was eroding and, you know, when did we buy it and things of that nature. So you have the 10-year capital plan, but really managing it in that year and what is the need for? The, what else I look at with the capital budget is I look at past capital projects and see if the money's been expended. Cause some department heads will ask and you'll give them year after year, but then they don't spend their money and they're not getting through their projects. So you always want to try to manage that. Well, you know, we gave you money two years ago for this, but you haven't got to it. Um, so it's really trying to, to, to move through what we need for the year coming up, but managing the long-term needs that are in the plan. I do find sometimes too, that, um, when you look at the long-term plan and you're working with department heads, you know, when you get to about year four or five, people are just like throwing stuff in there. There's like, I really want to be looking at those 10 years, right? So you kind of have to kind of guide them through that. Um, so I think that's, that's how I approach, you know, the capital budget. Um, and I've made um, recommendations of not funding certain things if people don't spend their money. And then pri- and pri- I did notice though in Yarmouth though, you do have a capital budget committee and you have a rating system also. So it looks like you rate, and, and I, I, I read about it, but I didn't like jump into it. But what I would do also is that I would ask the department heads to tell me if they were asking for four items. Okay, what's your priority within these four items? And then I would always make recommendations for each department because sometimes if you look at it as a whole, you can always say that, uh, I, I'm just using an example, like an ambulance is much more important than, you know, people might look at that's much more important than anything else in the capital plan. But you might need something for rec. So when you look at it together, it might not be as important as that, but it's important to that department and making that department work. So I would kind of prioritize within the department as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jennifer, we've, um, we've talked a lot about some of your successes. Um, wondering if you could maybe identify, um, a failure, something that you've, um, struggled with? Tell us a little bit about how you handled it and most importantly, what you learned from it.
Sure, um. So struggles, I think, one example that I can use is, um, is probably with procurement. Because procurement, the procurement law in Massachusetts is just crazy. And you really have to have experience of putting, uh, with projects. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little bit more comfortable here. Um, have experience with projects in order to, to address the procurement. Um, so I will tell you that I, when I worked in a previous town and we were putting out an RFP for the management of a golf course and, um, there was a company that wanted it and didn't get it. And so they brought in their attorneys and sued us. So then we went out and did an, and there was a couple of technical things in the RFP that weren't addressed. So I went and put another RFP out and then they tried to sue us again, but we ultimately won on all that. So I think that's probably, um, I, when I'm looking at procurement and putting an RFP together or an RFQ or a bid, it's so extensive that, you know, I, I think that's where, um, and if you're really, really busy, you, you know, you might want to have another set of eyes looking at it. So I think the procurement process and trying to streamline that, but adhere to the procurement and making sure your documents are tight, making sure contracts are tight. I know that when I worked in Falmouth, um, because I think to be successful, you need a, a, another set of eyes, especially when you're putting the budget together, right? I could put the budget together, but I want somebody else to take a look at it. Because, you know, we make mistakes or they might see something and you want something, somebody to review. It really is, you know, a process with everybody else involves. So I think my weakness would probably be procurement, but I say that because it, there's a lot to it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark.
Thank you. Um, Jennifer, uh, if you're hired, what would be your top three priorities within your first 90 days on the job?
Okay, so the first priority would be, um, I think, but budget, I would see, where, where are we with, you know, with the budget? Cause I know we're going through the budget process, so that would be number one. Um, uh, revenue estimates, things of that nature. What are we looking at for next year? What needs to be put in the budget? Will we looking at anything for debt? The other, what I would look at is, um, our projects. And if we have any, um, short-term notes, any bond anticipation notes, when do they do? Um, do we need to borrow? Um, when are we borrowing? What, you know, really look at the projects. I think that, that's always something I look at, you know, right away. And then I would look at capital. I think capital was due already. I can't remember the dates, but I did read about it. Um, so I think that's probably moving through the process a little bit quicker. So where are they with the capital budget committee? Um, what, what are our processes here? Who are the liaisons to the committees? Because this is the, this is the point in time where you're putting everything together and getting it ready for the committee. So that's what I would, I would focus on the next 90 days. And then after like, after it goes to the committees, everything's put together, then you just talk about it and you tell everybody, you know, answer everybody's questions.
Very good. Thank you.
Awesome.
Yep.
Okay, Jennifer, this is, uh, your time, as I told you at the beginning and the end. First of all, I want to thank you, um, for myself and for all of the board members for coming here and applying for this position and, uh, putting yourself out there for the interview process. It was very informative, um, and enjoyable and, um, um, we really thank you for, for that experience. So this time is dedicated for whatever purpose you wish to use it for. And, uh, take as much time as you want, not to exceed five minutes.
Well, I'm not a really big talker. I try to get to the point. Um, I will say, one of the strengths that probably didn't come out in the question is I am able to think out of the box. When a problem comes up, I'm able to look at it different ways. And especially I think that can be difficult in municipal government because we are highly regulated. And we have to adhere to, you know, rules and, and mass general law. So I am able to think out of the box. And, you know, um, when we're faced with an, with a problem, um, you know, and we can't do it a certain way, then it's like, okay, what's our goal and how can we get there? And that's working with department heads, town administrators, um, to, to really discuss, how can we get to where we want to be within the rules of what we're doing? And so I, I think I'm good at that. I think I'm good. And you know what? We can do this. I think this might work. What do you think about this? Um, and I want to thank everybody for having me. It's been nice to meet you. Um, it's nerve wracking, you know, when I haven't sat in front of a board in an interview in a while. Um, but it's good. It's always good to brush up on your skills. It's good to get out of your comfort zone and it's good to put yourself out there. So I want to thank you for letting me do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. We'll, uh, take about five minutes and we'll come back, alright? That's okay. Bye, bye. That's up to you guys. You guys have our decisions tonight. That, that, that's up to you guys, um, whether we want to do that or not.
I'm set.
You're all set? The, 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 the concern is then it's hard to get these people in that, they're looking for their positions and if you drag it out too long, you may lose them. That's-
But I'm, I'm just telling you, I'm set. I don't-
You're all set.
I don't, I don't, I don't need that anymore.
Um. Boy, absolutely. No, I mean, I always find something to go over the notes and just say, I mean, I last were great.
Just charred.
Good, how are you guys? Oh boy.
I need some pressure. You know, and I, you know, I miss, when I worked in Province Town and managed your bond, this is where we had the more children.
Oh, I've got a wicked headache right now.
Yeah. Brewster. You can boost the one I open the net.
Between the lights.
The windows are always open. I, I'm just like a, like a watch.
Well, I would have been right with you on that one.
Right.
Everybody all set? Um, so I guess the next question is whether the board wants to put the decision over until the next meeting or make a decision tonight. The reason that we put this on for a possible vote was, uh, after discussion with Bob, uh, it was pretty evident that this position's been difficult to fill. We've had to hire specialists actually to, to bring us these three candidates. And I think it's been vacant for at least six months and it's a critically important position to the towns. Um, the other thing we have to consider is that, uh, these candidates may have applied for other jobs as well and, and the way may not be, um, in our best interests. Um, so having said that, um.
Are you looking for some feedback, Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Then if I weren't, I'm sure I would receive some from you.
I'm prepared to vote tonight. So I'll just leave it at that. I'm prepared if you want.
Fuck you Dan. Thank you.
I could go either way on the issue. Um, if the consensus is to make a decision tonight, I'm prepared.
Darkus.
I could vote tonight.
Okay, Peter.
I, I, I would prefer to put it off. That being said, if the consensus is to vote tonight, I, 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 I could make a decision. Yeah. No, I, I would make a decision.
The other, the other thing I, I think that comes into play, um, is whether or not we feel that any one candidate has really emerged as the leading candidate. In my mind, one has. I don't know if the others feel the same way or not.
Well, I feel the same way.
Yeah.
I, I was frankly, I was torn between two candidates.
I can, and I can certainly understand that. Um, because we, we had, out of the three, I think we had two very strong candidates.
I was a little torn between the two candidates, but I'd be willing to.
Well, we can hash that out and see which of the two, um, we should, we should make an offer to. Peter.
I, I, I'm, I'm flipping coins between two people.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a pitch for a candidate if that's a, that's an order.
A minute, um. Let's ask our consultant, do you, do you have any other information that you think would be, um, valuable to the board, uh, in terms of going forward with a decision tonight? And that's the first question that I have for you.
Well, I guess the, the, uh, the short answer is that, uh, you, Mr. Chairman, you've already hit upon it somewhat. Uh, there are, uh, as I said at the opening, there are other positions available, uh, or that are doing searches at the same time. Uh, and I know one of the candidates, um, and I, obviously I can't reach confidentiality, but I know one of the candidates is being considered in another community as well. And maybe, there may be more, right? So, and then-
This, this may be an unfair question. I'm not going to ask you specifics, but do you feel that there is a clear, um, what shall I say, leader in this group?
That is, I won't, I won't, I won't describe that as an unfair question. It's a difficult question for me to answer. Um, what I like-
Because you could lose your business. No, I'm kidding.
No, no, uh, but, um, but what I will say though, I guess the way I would answer that is, and I think I, I perhaps alluded to this a little bit at the beginning. You have three different candidates with three different skill sets.
I agree.
Um, what I really liked, you know, you have, you're, you have a candidate that's, um, relatively, um, I, I want to be careful what word I use here for this one, but, um, that would be, a lot of this would be new to them in terms of, um, being in the role of a director of finance, uh, in Massachusetts, um.
And a, and a town of this size.
Town of this size and the complexities of Massachusetts general laws that they may not be familiar with.
But has a lot of potential.
Right. Uh, but th- there's a big move there too, that, that would have to take place.
Yes.
You have another candidate that's extremely, um, good at, uh, uh, major infrastructure projects, um, managing grants and the like, uh, very, you know, and you've got a huge infrastructure project here with the wastewater, uh, project. Then you have another candidate who's been in the job and done the job and been able to, um, it, it, there's nothing that they haven't, probably nothing that they haven't seen before. But they all come in and they, they all have different personalities, different- But they all come in and they, they all have different personalities, different experiences. Um, so do I think there's one? I don't know. That's up for you to decide. Um. But. You know, I think you have three very good, strong candidates here.
Well, I would, I would agree with that. And I think, as you said, they all bring. Different, uh, things to the table. Um. They certainly all have energy for the position, that's for sure.
Right.
And they all have very good, the, the, the first guy, I mean. He's like the ultimate communicator. You don't have to worry about, I mean, he just loves to talk about his, I mean, you could tell he really enjoys his job and enjoys talking about his job. Um, but there's a question of Massachusetts experience and, and relocation and some things like that. Um. I, uh, you know, it's clear to me who the two candidates are that the board's going to consider without anybody saying anything and, and, um. It's the second, third candidates, correct? Am I right? Yeah, okay. So. They're both strong. They're both very strong candidates. They would both be, I, I think they both could do the job. Um. Without over committing, is there anything you want to say, Bob, in terms of just general guidance on this?
Well, you know, a couple of things that, that I would say, obviously, um. You know, i- it was eye opening for me to, to see all, all the different candidates with the different skillsets. And, and completely different personalities as well. The one thing I want to, you know. Call the board's attention to that, you know, this position. Is much different than some of the positions we've recently filled, uh, in terms of. You know. We were looking in the law enforcement community at people with, um. A larger level of charisma to engage the community, to be out there, to be out front. When you're talking about the finance director, I see it. Um, different. And the type of people that you. Boss in the, the finance profession have different, you know, personalities, generally the ones with experiences that have done it. So. Um, you know. I, I don't really go as much on the charisma piece and, and the out front, um, you know, I, I, I think obviously. Um, Mr. Weiner, um, is a delightful gentleman and he is a professional municipal government. Um, person that is, and he's going places. You can just see it in his bearing and his demeanor. Um, and, and I'd love to find a spot for him in our organization. I don't think he's got, um, enough direct hands-on experience. Uh, you know, to be the finance director today, you know, he could grow into that role. And I think when you match him against the other. Um, finalists, you know, some of that lack of experience shows. And, um, I, I think the, the second candidate, uh, Mr. McColl, um. Now, he has, is that great out front personality, a big, uh, you know, presence. And, and he has got a lot of experience on, um, urban renewal and financing public infrastructure. Um, but, um, I don't know. Overall, for my money, I, I thought there was only one candidate that had. The breadth of experience in all facets of the operation. That we need the help in, um, right now, that has worked with infrastructure, but also. Has the knowledge of things that the other candidates haven't even thought of. I don't, don't even know. I, I'm, I'm going to have to spend a long time learning. On all of those cycles of the finance, how, how things work. And, you know, even as finance directors. I'm impressed that, um, Ms. Mullen, um, has presented, um, budgets and, um, capital in front of town meeting. In front of selectmen. She's not just a backroom person, so, um. I, I, I love all of the candidates, but I really found one of them to be head and shoulders in terms of the experience in. Every single facet of municipal operation that we need to move forward and has twice. Taken a community with a double A plus or less and brought them to triple A, which is exactly where we left off. And I, I think somewhere we need to go. So, um, I, I, I love all the candidates, but I, I just felt that, that one of them was, was really ready to step in and, and move forward. That's kind of my sense of it.
I'm going to start at Peter's end. Um, Peter.
I, I.
What, what did you think about? You, you can talk about Jennifer, you can talk about Neil or both.
Um. Our, our, our friend from the Midwest, um, I really like them. He's got potential galore. Um. I don't, I don't think he's got the skillset and knows enough to be able to, to transition to, to the great state of Massachusetts. Um, on the other hand, he has run things. And as I was telling Bill earlier, he's, he's been in small towns, so he's emptied the garbage. And he's done the guy who empties the garbage, garbage. So, you know, he's, so he's got, it got a lot, but I don't think he's got the, got the. The wherewithal to, to, to go. Um, our friend from Quincy. Got a lot of phenomenal experience and stuff. Our lady from Cohasset, um, has, has more. And, and I'm, I'm going down my list here. I, I, you know, I said, okay, good. Better than good, real good. Uh, and Jennifer, in my opinion, had more of the real goods than, than, than an, anyone else. Um, and I think, you know, if it comes down to between our friend from Quincy and our, and our friend from Cohasset, I think they would both work out. But if I were to vote right now, Jennifer gets my vote.
Okay. Darcus.
Um, I was very impressed with Neil. I was impressed with his research that he did to prepare for his, um, time here. Um, the difference in the resumes between Neil and Jennifer's, um. You know, I look at finance and I think of, um, people that are detail oriented and he fit the bill, but. The more Jennifer talked, the more I could see that she knew what she was talking about. And she, of all the candidates, was the only one that brought up the relationship with the school committee. Which is a vital piece. And she was the only one that brought that up. And, um. She, I think has, you know, um, the type of, she, she talks about the fact that she's a collaborator. And I think coming into this position, that's very important because we have. Some very good department heads here that don't need to have somebody come in and pound them over the head about finances. That we need somebody that's going to come in here and work with them. And work with Bob and work with Bill and work with the board. Um, and I think she's got the experience to do it. And so she has my vote.
Yeah.
Actually, I, I think we're all very, um, of like mind in this particular regard. Um, as I listened to her, um, the more I listened to her and. Initially I had the impression that she was a little nervous, but I wrote, um. When she relaxes, she really knows her stuff. And I, it just, it came through, through the middle and toward the end of her, um, interview that. Um, this woman really knows the job as it exists today. Um, I love the fact that she's collaborative, like you, Darcus. She talked about workshopping and teaching the staff. All great stuff, stuff that we want from a finance director. Um, I love the fact that she loves Cape Cod and she knows it. You know, that she is so intimately familiar between Falmouth, which is a town that's extremely, uh, comparable to Yarmouth. And, uh, Chatham, which is, has been down the road ahead of us in some of the, um, the more important, um. Infrastructure, um. Challenges that we have still ahead of us. She did her homework. I was so impressed with her peppering in, um, different. Um, opportunities that she had to look at how Yarmouth does things. And to bring it into the conversation and to be knowledgeable about it. She really nailed that. Um, the fact that she's willing to have another set of eyes, I love that, you know, that there was a sense of humility to her that, uh, was impressive. For somebody with her experience. Uh, but she didn't hesitate when she, um. When some asked a direct question, she knew exactly what she wanted to say and she jumped right on it. She's been doing the job for a while now. She's intimately familiar with the Cape and the Cape issues. She has a lovely way about her. Her, her humility really belies her experience and her intelligence. So hands down, she has my vote.
Mark.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. First of all, Bernie, thank you. Thank you for helping us find. A qualified candidate. This is the one position that I. Lost sleep over because we've had a very strong finance director in Yarmouth for a long time. And, um. You know, it's, it's, as you know, it's been tough and, uh, you brought us three very interesting candidates. And I, I think we enjoyed all of the interviews, um, but clearly the candidate that. I believe we need to hire and bring on board as our next finance director is Jennifer. Her experience as a finance director in other communities is very strong. Um, she can hit, she manages the budget process. She can start, you could clearly see that the mind's already working about. Getting that process going and, uh, from start to finish, from soup to nuts. Um, her experience in supervising, I mean, one of the things we tend to forget is that. This job as a finance director is supervising the accounting office, the treasurer, collector office and the assessing office. That's a big job. And with all due respect to the other candidates, you really need somebody. In this position that has experience doing that because those are very complicated departments and there's a lot to it. And to having a spirit, an experienced finance director. That knows what those jobs and what those departments are all about and how they work. Is incredibly important in terms of providing the kind of leadership that is expected from this position. Her skills in terms of capital planning, debt management are outstanding. Um, I loved the fact that she talked several times about customer service training. Right? You don't hear that that often, but as everyone knows, when it comes to customer services. This department is at the heart. Next to the town clerk, of course, but these are very demanding in terms of. Servicing customers, so in taxpayers. So to hear that, I thought that was incredibly important. Her grasp on big projects, her work in dealing with standard imports. In dealing with bond ratings and helping us get to that point, I think is, uh, is speaks for itself. So I think quite frankly, um. The only weakness was with Munis, but it's clear that she's going to be able to. Overcome that issue relatively quickly. So. Uh, she's the candidate that I think is the strongest experience, the strongest background. Brings the most to the position and she's the one that will hit the ground running on day one. So I think the sooner we. Uh, make a decision on this one. That's why I'm anxious to make the decision tonight because if we don't. Pick her and if we don't get her on board, I'm, I'm worried that we could lose her. So I, I think she would be a huge addition to the town of Yarmouth. I think she will work well. With our very, very strong management team. I know she's had experience working with several of the department heads, just given her background, her travels, so. Um. And I, uh, this is an exciting decision. I mean, I, I was nervous about would we, you know, among the choices, but. I'm thrilled to have the opportunity tonight to, uh, to vote for her. So.
Thank you, Mark. Um. I think that, uh, Neil would be a very strong candidate, but I. But he's not as well-rounded as Jennifer is. I think he would need some, um. Help. In various aspects of the job. I think he'd grow into it and I think he'd learn fast. He's a very bright guy. Um, he has extensive experience in capital projects and managing capital projects. Now, he's a great communicator. Um, he'd be a very good front man. Jennifer is not as strong as him in that respect, but as Bob says, the finance director is. It's not that kind of position that you're as much upfront as you are as a police chief or a fire chief or, or one of those more visible positions. You really want somebody that can. Crunch the numbers, manage budgets, determine the, the financial needs of the town, um, when and how to raise the money. Um. Keeping control of the debt service and the, the. You know, the overall debt structure of the town. The thing with Jennifer is there's none of that learning that you'd have to, um, engage in. She could come in here and there'd be very minor adjustments. I think she. Pretty much almost start where Ed Santeo left off. And I don't think you'd have, um. Much of a, much of a gap there. Uh. I also, um. Listen to Bob very carefully and when he gets evaluated, one of his real strong suits is in municipal finance. So I'm taking that into consideration that somebody who the board has, um. Scored very highly in, in that area, I, I want to hear. From him based on his experience and his qualifications in municipal finance, who he'd like to work with and, and why. So I'm, I'm, I'm putting some heavy reliance on that as well. Um. She's, um, she's. She's a multifaceted lady. She's really done it all when it comes to municipal finance and, um. In my opinion, the most qualified candidate, all things considered. So. Uh, I'll entertain a motion, Mark, if you have one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we. Uh, Jennifer Mullen as the town of Yarmouth's next finance director.
Subject.
Subject to contract negotiations with our town administrator. Did I get that right, Bernie?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Then Elsie, you got to straighten him out on Bernie before we vote.
No, he's done this before, so.
So we have, we have a motion and a second. To appoint Jennifer as finance director, subject to successful contract negotiations. Right? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously by a vote of five to zero. Um, and I, and I want to thank you too, Bernie, for all your hard work and, uh, as Mark says, bringing us such a. Uh, a highly qualified candidate to fill a position that we, we've had a very difficult time trying to find a successor to Ed Santeo. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And I, and I thought the board did a great job with the, uh, the interview process and your deliberations, uh, were, were. Well structured, well thought out and, uh, I, 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 again, I go back to, I think you had three. Very good candidates. Any of them could have come in and done the job. They might've needed a little bit of, uh, work on a couple of areas, but, uh, I think, uh. You know, I think you've done very well. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hopefully all the contract negotiations will go well, but if they don't, do not blow these other two people out of the water.
Oh. No, I think.
I understand. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make a motion to adjourn when you're ready.
I'm ready. Okay.
Second that.
Okay. So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, Bernie. This was great.
Thank you, man.
This was great.